Okay.
Yes.
All right. Testing, testing. All right. So just so you know what's going on here today, my name is Chris Pitts and I am the current president of the Wobbin Area Council and the producer of these debates, going on 14 years, I think, now with Marjorie, has done every one of them. And so the four councils of Wobbin, Upper Falls, Highlands, and Newtonville have been bringing these debates for context to offices. And the past debates can actually be seen on YouTube, kind of interesting to see over the years. Each area council is made up of nine unpaid elected representatives. You can vote for area council candidates on a separate ballot on November and at the City Hall during early voting, from October 28th, I think, to November 1st. We received a lot of questions from our survey and we worked many of those into the questions you're going to hear today and tomorrow. And the final list of questions was not shared with anyone. In fact, the final list questions are by the moderator only, so there's two ways to look at that. One is if these candidates know what's going on, they could probably write these questions themselves and they've had a chance to answer many of them on the way to the stage, so. But there may be some surprises here and there, probably not, but we'll get a chance to hear from them and what makes them different. And anyways, let me tell you about Marjorie Ehrens Behrendt, who was the editorial director at WCVBTV Channel 5, Boston, for 20 some years and produced many of the station's political and candidate forums. She has three Emmys and five times national award for excellence in television editorials from the National Broadcast Editorial Association. In 2019, she was inducted to the Mass Broadcasters Hall of Fame, and that's pretty special. You have your own blog, marjorieehrens.behrendt.com. Okay, so the format was really created to a portion of time fairly, but we want this to be conversational if you can, but the moderator will be actively engaged in moving discussion along and will alternate who's first to answer each question. Point is, we want to find out who these candidates are, what they're going to do in office, and what makes them different. Here are the rules for the debate. Answer in general should be under 45 seconds for the, but the moderator may change that. Rebutts will be limited to 30 seconds, again, a moderator may change that. Candidates may make closing statements of 30 to 45 seconds. So with that, why don't we get started?
Thanks, Chris. It's great to be back in the moderator's seat. The goal today is vigorous debate and civil dialogue. You can count on me to press for follow-up information and cut off filibustering. We're all here today because of our love for the city and its well-being. Mark Laredo grew up in Newton, attended Newton Public Schools, got his undergraduate degree at Cornell and his law degree at the University of Pennsylvania. He worked as an assistant attorney general in the Mass AG's office and is a practicing attorney at the law firm Laredo Smith &amp; Kane, which he co-founded. He served eight years on the school committee, including as its chair, and 14 years on the city council, serving two terms as president. Al Chicanelli Jr. is a life, excuse me, Albert Chicanelli Jr. is a lifelong resident of Newton and also a graduate of Newton Schools. After high school, he attended Johnson and Wales University, then earned a Juris Doctorate from the New England Law School in Boston and is currently a practicing attorney. He's involved in local nonprofits such as the Sons of the American Legion and the Newton Taxpayers Association. At one time, he served on the Parks Recreation and Cultural Commission. He also worked as a professional chef and posts on social media about food, my favorite issue. So now on to the serious public policy issues. In preparation for these debates, the four city councils did a public opinion survey. Not surprisingly, respondents' top concern is how is the city run and how that affects them. Newton has a strong mayor form of government, and both of you want to take that on, but there's a growing sentiment that the city council should have greater powers, for example, in more robust participation in shaping the city budget. Let's start with you, Mark. As outgoing president of the city council, would you favor giving up some of the mayoral role in shaping the budget and shifting it to the city council?
You know, I'm certainly open always to giving some thought to those issues. There's a balance there. You've got to, it's one thing to say generally I support that, it's another thing to look at specifics. For example, I do support the city council having money to hire an independent attorney, for example. I think that's useful, I think that's important. The city council also has authority over the city clerk and we need to make sure that that authority is there, properly funded. Financially, I'm open to it. I'd really want to think very carefully about the details before I commit to anything.
Al, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm against it. I think that part of the job of the mayor is to be a financial steward for the city. I believe that too many chefs ruin the sauce. So I would be against that.
All right, let's talk about the city budget, what's in it and how to pay for it. The annual budget for the city is well over $623 million. Eighty-three percent of that budget comes from property taxes and many residents are financially strapped or facing a period of financial uncertainty. Moody's has given Newton AAA rating, but has pointed to storm clouds ahead. We've lost COVID relief funds, federal ARPA funds, and more cuts are anticipated. So to what extent are there opportunities for cutting services or are there reallocations that you might suggest? Al, and then Mark.
Well, I think that we need to get away from residential development and try to get some commercial development into the city. I know that's not an overnight cure, but the commercial property tax rate is higher and they use less services.
Well, we're going to get into commercial development, but I want to look at what is currently in the budget and whether you can make cuts that you would recommend or reallocate any monies.
Well, I think that we should have one purchasing department in the city, we should have one HR department in the city. Right off the bat, there's two cuts that we could make. I think we need to be on an austerity budget right now because most of our citizens are on an austerity budget. I think that we need to look at our contracts and as mayor, I would be working for the citizens of Newton, not for the unions.
Mark?
So look, there's, when I come into office, we're going to look at every single department carefully. That's a job you do regularly, you should be doing it repeatedly. There's two ways in particular that we can try to improve our city's financial situation without cutting services. One is to make far better use of technology. When I've been talking to department heads at City Hall, for example, it's clear that we're still doing things on paper, for example, that should be automated. That's beneficial for the residents, that's beneficial for us. I also think that we're going to see AI take a very significant role in how we deliver services going forward. That's an area we need to be very careful of, but we should not be afraid of.
Now, Al mentioned contracts with city employees. Would you see opportunities for reshaping those contracts at all?
Look, I think it's really important when you have existing contracts with your unions that you honor them. You negotiate them fairly, you keep them. Negotiations are hard. We'll do our best job in negotiations, understanding that our union's of legitimate needs, our workers of legitimate needs, and we have finite finances. But the key there is to have fair, open, transparent negotiations with your unions and recognize that our city employees are really good at what they do. And I'm a firm believer that you support and value your workforce and then you get a better workforce that better serves the residents.
Another contract that I wonder if you are interested in looking at, and that has to do with no-bid consultant contracts. Let's start with you, Al. What specific steps would you take to make such consultant contracts more efficient and transparent?
Well, I would first, I would get rid of the no-bid. Every service that the city needs should be bid on and the lowest price isn't always what we're looking at, we want to take that into consideration. We need to find who's going to provide the best services at the best price.
What are your thoughts on that?
Well, if you're looking at a bid situation, you are looking at the lowest bid, that's how you have to evaluate it. So do I think as a general no-bid contract's a good answer? No, you always should be having competition. There are occasions, for example, procuring legal services on an emergency basis, for example, where you need to go to someone you trust. You need to make sure the price is fair, you've got to scrutinize those bills that you get just like they'd be a bill to you personally, but at the same time, just putting it out for a bid process sometimes doesn't get you the best person for the job.
So we've been looking at finding savings in existing line items. President Trump seems to be targeting cuts for certain so-called welcoming cities and Newton is hospitable to immigrants. Would you support keeping Newton's welcoming city ordinance if it means losing the roughly $11 million it gets directly from the feds? We'll start with Mark.
The short answer is yes. We have a moral obligation in this city to do what's right. Our city council very clearly passed an ordinance that says we're a welcoming city. I think it's fair, I think it's reasonable. We are going to obey the law, I want to be very clear about that, but there are principles involved here. And as your leader, it's important that I stand up for principles.
Al, you, where do you stand on that?
Well, I think first we have to examine the question. You asked about immigrants. I love immigrants, I think immigrants are great, they've helped this country grow. Welcoming cities that allow for illegal aliens to be here should lose that funding and I'm against having us remain a sanctuary city if that's what that means. I think that we need to follow federal law. The supremacy clause says that federal law supersedes local, state, all of those. So if federal law says that illegal aliens need to be deported, we need to work with the federal government and keep that funding because we need the funding.
Now, you said in a previous debate or interview that you think that Trump is doing a great job. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? We don't want to get sidetracked.
For four years, the Biden administration allowed unfettered, unvetted crossing of the border. Now we need to take extreme steps to combat that. Eventually, all are going to go. Right now, the worst of the worst are being rounded up, but if they find you here while they're doing that, they're going to deport you also.
Mark?
President Trump gave an awful wonderful, awfully wonderful opportunity for people to self-deport. They get $1,000, they get a plane ticket home, and they have an opportunity to come back.
Thank you.
If these people stay here, they don't get a chance to come back.
Thanks, Mark.
I'm a huge believer in democracy, okay? I'm a believer in democratic values. I'm a believer in the First Amendment, I'm a believer in freedom of speech, freedom of press, freedom of association. I am worried about what's going on in Washington DC now. The idea that we're militarizing the National Guard to send it into cities like Chicago and Portland and maybe Boston, and hopefully not Newton, I think is fundamentally wrong. The fact that ICE agents wear masks when they come in and arrest people, in my mind, is like a totalitarian regime. That's wrong. It doesn't mean we're not going to obey the law, we are, and I stand firmly with our police and fire and other public safety organizations in obeying the law. But I also believe in democratic values and we need to stand up in this city, in this country, for democratic values.
Thanks.
Actually, could I?
All right, very quickly.
So how do you feel about the police car in Boston that was set on fire the other day?
Absolutely wrong to do that, Al.
Okay, so how about the riots in Seattle?
All right, wait, 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 wait. This is filibustering now because we want to get back to the strictly local.
Okay, but he said that he was against having additional enforcement in these areas.
That's not what I said, Al.
Okay, let's not.
You said you didn't want the federal government to bring the National Guard in.
The question on everyone's mind is, will we soon face a proper two and a half override? Mark, you said that you would support a debt exclusion override for capital projects, but you would, so what criteria would you use in determining whether we would need an operating budget override?
I've repeatedly said, Marjorie, there's three factors that I look at. One, you have to have a very clear improvement, whether it's on the school side, the city side, or both. That's number one. Number two, you've got to take into account the city's finances, the state of the economy locally, nationally, at a state level, you've got to factor that in. And third, the voters have to trust me and trust my team that we've managed the city wisely and that with any additional funds, we're going to use them properly and appropriately as promised.
Al, your thoughts? Do you differentiate between debt exclusion overrides and operating budget overrides?
Well, I think the big difference with the debt exclusion override and the general override is that the debt exclusion override is only for 30 years, the regular override is for a lifetime. But guess what? Looking out into the crowd, I think that a debt exclusion override, other than two of you that seem like you're a little younger, you can pick which two, that's a lifetime override. So there is no difference to me. They are both lifetime overrides. I'm only 60 years old, but you know, 90 years old is when a debt exclusion override would go away. We, as a city, have to think about the less fortunate, the people that are struggling, the people that are just hanging on to stay in Newton. We talk about getting low-income housing into Newton, we talk about a diversity of residents.
The timekeeper, I said.
Oh, I'm sorry.
May I respond to that for a moment?
Yes, quickly.
Look, we built new fire stations with override money, debt exclusion override money. We are going to need a new police station. We've built schools with debt exclusion override money. Those are critical infrastructure improvements for our city and I support our police, I support our fire folks, and I support our students and our teachers and they need facilities that are appropriate for them. And that costs money and we need to persuade the public that that's money well spent.
All right, you said that you acknowledged that there has to be a level of trust between the mayor and the people as to how far and when you can go in this matter. And what specifically would you do to rebuild trust that has been lost perhaps in recent years?
There's multiple things you do. One is you're completely clear and transparent about your finances and you put your finances on a city website so that they're readily understandable to the average voter. That's number one. Number two, it's not an individual approach at City Hall, it's a team approach. And my team is going to be all over the city, meeting with people all over the city to explain what we do, to get feedback as to what's not working well, and to improve. That's how you build the trust, period.
Al?
I agree with the city finances being on the website in a form that's easy to read and understand. Currently, I think that the city website needs some work. It's hard to navigate, it's hard to find what you're looking for. So I would work on getting that more navigable and having more information on it. I would continue the mayor's newsletter. I think that's a wonderful thing that we could do to show transparency and I would be out there. I would have one day a month where I would have open office hours where people could just come in and speak with me. They'd have to sign up and, you know, because there'd be a list of, you know, people. But I would be accessible to the average person. I'm out there every day in the community, working currently, I have a good relationship with the citizens of Newton and I think that that would show through with my love of the city.
Well, good luck to whoever wins in getting that website fixed. Some 65% of the budget relates to the schools and the schools are widely understood to have a structural deficit. How would that factor into your decision to move to an operating budget override?
You want me to go first, Marjorie?
Sure.
So look, that's going to be a critical factor. It is highly likely, if we have any kind of operating override at all, that a portion of that's going to go to the schools. The schools are the most important issue for me and there's good reason for that, the 65% of the money that we spend. And that's our main job as a city, is to educate our kids. Like Al, I'm a product of the Newton Public Schools, all three of my kids went through the Newton Public Schools and I served on the school committee for eight years. So I know our schools really well. That's where we need to spend the money. We are going to be smart about it, we're going to be thoughtful about how we spend money in the system, but the needs of kids today are very different than when I went to school some 30, 40 years ago. And we have to acknowledge that as well and our teachers understand that.
So, Al, the school structural deficit, would that incline you any more readily to an operating override?
No, I think that education is the most important part of my job. Education first. When I graduated Newton North High School, we were the fifth in the nation. Now we're 10th in our state. We need to do something to change that. I think Dr. Nolan is a step in the right direction, but we need to reorganize, we need to stop spending money on pilot programs like the Washington Street. That money could have went to the school budget. The bumpouts in the roads that we're adding, all money that is misspent.
All right, so let's talk a little bit about where other monies could be found to go toward the schools. We've been on a very conservative schedule for fully funding the OPEB benefits, that other post-employment benefits, and have scheduled a date for full actuarial funding 10 years in advance of what the state mandates. To what extent should we ease up on that as a way of freeing certain dollars for the schools?
Do you want me to go?
Sure.
So look, whether we like it or not, the retirement board controls the schedule of funding, the pension liability. City literally has no say over that under state law. With that said, we have a couple opportunities there. One is to try to negotiate with the retirement board to extend the schedule, but that's also likely to mean that there's going to be some cost involved. The other thing that I think is certainly worth exploring is having a pension obligation bond where we bond the money now, but we pay it off instead of over five years, over, say, 10 years. I want to be very careful about that because that has a lot of implications, but it's certainly something we ought to be thinking through. That is a factor that squeezes us.
How about you?
Well, I think that we should look at other avenues of raising money in the city. We've got two beautiful stadiums at both of the high schools. What about naming rights? We have people that live in this city that own huge corporations, multinational businessmen. Why not see if we can get some naming rights to those? We could also do it with the gymnasiums, we could do it all over the city. It's a wonderful opportunity to think out of the box and get some money into the city.
Are you up to going after some of the wealthier people for selling naming rights?
You know, naming rights sounds great, but it's not a solution. Let's be really blunt about it, okay? First of all, yes, seller naming right is one-time funds, it's not a continuing source of money, unlike, you know, passing an operating override, for example. Second, you've got a real issue when you have public buildings and you have corporations and individuals paying to have their names placed on those buildings. I think there's cause for concern about that, but the bottom line is, it's just not going to be effective. It's not going to bring you the kind of money, nearly the kind of money that you need. Should we get more money from private donors to help supplement school and city spending? Absolutely. We should be much more aggressive of using our donor base, of creating alumni networks, but that's not going to be the solution here and I frankly think it's not fair to the public to say that's going to be the solution.
Okay, so over the years, candidates have talked and talked and talked about getting more money from local nonprofit institutions, so-called pilots or payment in lieu of taxes. Very briefly, are there meaningful opportunities for that or is this destined to continue just to be so much talk? Al first.
Well, I think that we first need to heal the rift between Boston College and the city. I think that once that's done, we may have an opportunity to get money in a pilot program from them. I think that the pilot program would be good if it was implemented properly, but right now, it doesn't seem to be going anywhere. I am all in favor, though, of going after that.
So look, again, I think it's wonderful to try to increase the pilot payments, it's a laudable goal, probably going to be much more successful by talking to our universities in the city and exploring opportunities that are mutually beneficial for them. For example, Lynch School of Education at BC has teachers and trains teachers and we could have partnerships, we do already, that we have student teachers, but more partnerships, those are beneficial to our students, those are beneficial to teachers, that's beneficial to the school. So I certainly, I've met with some of the educational leaders, I'll continue to meet with more of them, and that's critically important that you forge those relationships. But pilots are the type of thing you talk about a lot in a campaign trail and are far easier to talk about in a campaign trail than actually implement.
As history has proven. Also, let's expand this whole notion of seeking new revenue. Let's talk about commercial development. Moody's has noted that we're already built out. Mark, the Chamber of Commerce has described you as growth resistant. You have said that there are, quote, "a lot of opportunities for development in the city." Would you please name some specific sites for such development?
Look, there are sites all along Needham Street, for example, we have some more newer properties, we have others that are older, there are sites along Washington Street. We are going to see developments in our village centers. There are certainly some sites in Auburndale where you may have older commercial buildings and they could be replaced by newer ones. We're going to have a very different approach in my administration to economic development and I've been extremely clear about it. We are going to be proactive. That means by starting to go out and talk to the local business owners, talk to the local landlords, what do they need from the city to improve? And then we're going to be proactive about going elsewhere in the Commonwealth, going elsewhere in the state, and going even internationally to market Newton as an attractive place. I'm also setting up an arts and culture department because I view arts and culture as an engine for economic development in the city and that's part of the reason we're doing that. So I have some very clear, very pro-growth plans to do that and we'll do it responsibly.
Al, where would you build and what would you build?
Well, I would try to build commercial property. We've had too much of an emphasis on residential units in the past 12 years and we've lost a lot of great opportunities. Grove Street would have been a great opportunity. In Nonantum, behind Watertown Street, there's a beautiful old mill area that is underutilized. That would be a great spot to put labs. I know that there used to be a lot of commercial stuff going on there, but we could really put one of those beautiful labs that they just built in Watertown on Galen Street. That could have came to Newton easily. Another thing I would do is, we would make it easier for commercial development as opposed to making it hard. We want to welcome these people, we want to attract them, we lost Travelocity to Needham. We need to get people to come to Newton because it's easy to work with us as opposed to leave Newton because it's hard.
Okay, so what specifically would you do then to be more hospitable toward commercial developers?
We would say, if you come to our city, here's the plan. We would have a plan that would make it easier to get through all of the hoops of building.
Mark, your thoughts on that?
Look, it's great to talk about generalities, okay, but I've got really specific ideas. I am going to have an economic development team that physically goes out there with me to talk to our local businesses, talk to our local landlords, come up with a clear marketing plan to make Newton attractive. That can be by video, it can be by website, there's a lot of creative ways to do that. And it's not something that's done overnight and it's not done with just the statement, I want more business here. Because, for example, lab space, I'd love to have lab space. I've talked to real estate developers, they're not developing lab space right now because it's not economically feasible.
Well, what about Riverside? We're on Riverside 4.0 right now. What Uh, what is the potential there and what should be, what should the city's role be?
You know, I can't talk about Riverside. As you know, it's a pending land use project. I sit on the land use committee. We're sitting in a quasi judicial capacity. Uh, I will tell you that I am thinking that issue, that Riverside, through very carefully. Uh, you also have to understand, it's not just what I may want, but it's what a developer is going to be able to get the financing to build. As much as I would love to see lots of office space built in the city, no developer right now is building office space.
So, Al mentioned making the process simple, and we hear this broad language about simplifying permitting process. What specifically could you change in the permitting process that would speed the process up?
Look, when I became chair of the land use committee, one of the things I did initially was to, to sit down with our planning department and trace the steps it took from when you showed up at City Hall to when you got approved. And we talked about what could be done to make that quicker. We're not doing nearly as well in that area as we could. As the mayor, I will be working with our planning department, so instead of three weeks to get something done, it gets done in a week. And if you do that, all through the process, you speed it up much quicker. It sounds small, it sounds incremental, but it actually makes a, a huge difference. And we are going to have a customer service mentality at City Hall, which means when people call us for something, like opening up that coffee shop, there's going to be somebody at City Hall who walks them through the process so they can get it done quickly. And if we have a rule that doesn't make any sense, we'll get rid of it.
All right, now you mentioned coffee shops. What should the mayor specifically be doing to help small businesses? Forget about the developers for a minute, small businesses. Al, do you want to go first?
Well, I, I think we need to promote our city to get these people in. We have a lot of empty storefronts, none in Nonantum right now, but in other areas. We have to think about what we can do to make it better for the, for the small business to make them want to come here. And I think some-
Well, have you been thinking about this?
Yeah.
So what specifically can the mayor do?
The, the, like I said, the mayor can promote getting these businesses into the city, and they can do it by making the city's, uh, village centers more vibrant, not by tearing down the existing buildings and building more. That's going to make the, 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 the businesses there less desirable, less, uh, less active because when you bring in construction, it throws off the parking, it throws off the, um, the traffic patterns, and these, these current businesses that are, that are there are going to have to leave. And then when the new building is built, it's going to be more expensive.
The clock has ticked.
Yeah.
Uh, Mark, what about small businesses?
So, look, it starts off with the basics. You start by talking to the people who are actually there now. I've been doing that. I've met with the restaurant owners, for example, on a couple of occasions in the city, talk about what they really need. It's very basic stuff. It's making sure they have attractive benches in front of their establishments, it makes sure there's good trash pickup there, it makes sure there's good lighting, it makes sure, makes, means making sure that the sidewalks are clean and safe and passable, both in summer and winter. It means making outdoor dining easier for our businesses rather than harder. The city encouraged outdoor dining at one point and then made it harder by making the individual businesses pay for moving those pavers that block the outdoor area. That, to me, is completely counterproductive. It means bringing people together in a village center so they can act collaboratively, and there's a lot of steps you can take.
Okay. Now, we've talked about the powerful impact of the schools on the city's overall budget. Another challenge facing the mayor comes in his role on the school committee, and that's how to preserve academic excellence and, at the same time, serve all levels of individual needs and potential for development. So, Al, let's start with you. How would you balance the two? What, what can the mayor on the school committee do to meet these two sometimes conflicting goals?
Well, the mayor would be the, the ninth member of the school committee. So I believe that going to all of the meetings would be important as the ninth member of the school committee. I believe that working to get a coalition of other, uh, school committee members together to help push those goals forward would be very important. Um, we would need to live within our budget, and by living within our budget, some cuts would have to be made. That would probably be cuts to staff and administration. But, you know, we've, we've had a declining enrollment over the years, and, um, you know, if, if we're not going to try to get those students back, we need to lower our staffing so that it's, it's, it's in the right area.
Uh, Mark, this really goes to the whole controversy in the community over cutting back on certain advanced placement courses, and there are competi, there are different constituents, constituents for different parts of the school budget. How do you balance those?
Look, I, number one, uh, you know, the school committee's job is really to hire and fire the superintendent, oversee the budget, and make some general policy decisions. It's not there to set curriculum. With that said, number one, I really like Dr. Nolan a lot, and I've been working with Dr. Nolan now to get ready for the future, including on the budget issues. Here's my view of academ, of, of schooling. Schools start with academics. I believe in academic rigor. I think it's appropriate. I think you want your kids to be challenged. There's a caveat. You do not want to create an environment where kids are overstressed out, and we've seen that in the past when we've had kids overloaded with work and they have very serious mental health issues, or at least some of them do. So it's a balance. You need rigor, but you also need balance. I'm a huge believer in extracurricular activities because I think they promote a lot for our schools. And every single kid in the school building needs to feel safe and secure every single day.
Okay, so are there lessons that you took away from the 11-day teacher strike last year? Uh, Mark will start.
Sure, I took away three lessons because during the strike, I spent a lot of time going out and talking to parents, particularly at the elementary school level. I led the city council in making some very strong statements urging all parties to get together to end the strike. And by the way, I led and made, did a press conference with maybe 14 other city councillors right behind me, and that, to me, says a lot about my leadership style, that it's not me alone, but it's a team. Three lessons, okay? Number one, you've got to have financial transparency upfront about what your real money needs are. Two, when the going gets tough, I think the mayor needs to get in the room. I've done lots and lots of negotiations in the school committee in my professional career. I'm not afraid to get in the room. I think it's important not only for the teachers to see that, the public to see it. Fi, third, and this is the hardest, the tone of communications, I think at times I would have changed. Frankly, that's much easier to say in hindsight than at the time, but I think that would have been beneficial.
Al, your thoughts?
Well, my, my thoughts are, first, there was no teacher's strike. There was an illegal work stoppage. Um, we should have forced the teachers back to work. The, the fines that they were given were, were released. Where, I don't, I don't understand. There was so much damage to the children. I nanny for my niece and nephews through their school, and my niece, after two years of being out on COVID, that strike really hurt her emotionally and mentally. And, you know, the teachers say, "Oh, we care about the children." Why did they do that to the children? I feel that, that they should have been forced back and forced to the table to negotiate.
How would, how would you force them back?
Uh, through, to the courts.
Okay.
Can I just respond? You know, I, I, I think my opponent forgets that the city did go to court, did seek certain relief. That's up to the judge, and the judge issued certain orders, but did, you know, they were fines, nothing else. So you need to abide by the legal process. We talk about, we talked earlier about obeying the law, and I think you follow the law, and you, you go to court, and the judge makes a decision, you respect it.
Okay. Um, the area council survey also reflected the top of mind is the challenge of keeping Newton affordable. So this applies to young people who grew up here, people who work for the city but can't afford to live here, and seniors who want to stay in the city but downsized. So, Al, you have been quoted as saying that Newton doesn't have a housing shortage, that the problem is affordability. But don't the law, laws of supply and demand suggest that creating more housing would lower the pressure on costs?
Actually, no, because they're not building housing that is lower-income housing. They're building luxury units. Um, we have to watch out because with the, um, the village, uh, the VCOD, Village Center Overdevelopment Plan, um, there is no call for any low-income housing. That's going to put, keep us in the, in the 40B forever. The problem is, is that 40B housing, the, the, right now with our, um, average median income, to be qualified for, as a single person, you can make up to $90,000 a year. To me, that's not low-income housing. That's not bringing diversity of, of income into the city. $90,000 a year is, is what, what 80% of our AMI is. So we need to, to change that, and we need to, to get out of the 40B so that we can decide in our, in our inclusionary zones, what, what the, what the, what the ratio is and what the income level is.
Mark, how would you keep the city more affordable?
So, look, this is an extraordinarily complicated question, and we're not going to solve it at the local level. Frankly, in Newton, we have limited ability to build more single-family housing. We just don't have the land for it, so we're not going to do it, and we need to be honest about it. Should we be providing more alternative types of housing in the city? We are, we're increasing our supply of apartments, for example. I think that's good. That's something that we have needed for a long time. Uh, we are, we certainly need to make sure we're working with the Newton Housing Trust, the Newton Housing Authority, to develop opportunities for low-income housing in the city. I think that's critical. Um, we also need to look at other things. If you look at, uh, True, Tulife, for example, over on the JCC campus, they're opening up a new facility called Opus, which is going to have housing for older residents that were, kind of the missing middle, so to speak. Not only will that provide housing for those folks, but in turn, that frees up single-family housing in the city as they move there. So that's another vehicle. The other thing we need to do is-
I see the stop sign.
I'll, I'll stop. I'll get to my next point later.
Can I, can I rebuttal that?
As part of your rebuttal, and then we'll move to Mark on that. Uh, you've talked about changing the inclusionary zone percentage requirement in, in developments, and it, what is it, 15 or 20% now? Uh, how would you, how high would you do that, and can, uh, developers afford to set aside an even greater percentage for, um, more moderately priced housing?
Well, if, if they can't do that, I would say then they need to find another town to develop in. Um, I would like to see a 30% AMI for a certain amount of, of, of units in every building that's built in the inclusionary zone. I think it's possible. I think that, that it needs to be done if we want to do anything about getting low-income housing. I think that if we're serious about it, that's important. But I'd like to also state that, the other day I went on Zillow, there were 500 housing units available right now in Newton. There were 2,300 being built. I don't think that we have a, a shortage of units. I don't think that we need to be, be in such a rush to build more units.
You know, I, I like to live in the real world, okay? And in the real world, you understand what the true financing ability is for something. If a developer can't get financing for something because the numbers don't work, and reputable developers whom you trust tell you that, and financial people whom you trust tell you that, you have to believe in it because we're, as a city, we're not going to be in the business of just developing housing all over the city. We may do it through the Newton Housing Authority and other places. I want to get back to the, what I was saying earlier about that, that the housing issue is, is not just local, but it's regional. I am determined to work with leaders from other cities and towns to improve our commuter rail because if we improve commuter rail, I mean, really improve commuter rail so that Springfield and Worcester become accessible, we are helping those cities and towns, and we're helping Newton because you're making it more viable to build there, and you're making it viable for people to commute back and forth.
Okay, so that's a wonderful segue into a conversation about infrastructure priorities. Uh, what are your priorities for road management and replacement? Will we ever see the potholes filled on tertiary roads? Al, let's start with you.
Well, I think that from talking to people in, as I've been out there on the road, potholes are an important issue. It's probably the, the third most often thing I hear about. Um, I think that we need to have a, a plan to fix them, but my, the thing that I'm most concerned about is the road diet that Newton is on. I think it's bad for the environment because it causes tie-ups.
What do you mean by road diet?
Where they're narrowing the roads, taking out lanes, um, and I think that we need to allow people that are going to drive to get from A to B in their car for the least amount of time that it, they can take. Right now, the road diet is making bottlenecks and congestions, congestion, and it's, it's made to, to make people so frustrated that they leave their cars at home, and that's not an option in this city.
Mark?
So, look, it, it's multifaceted, but there's things I'll do right up front. I really think the DPW department needs to be focused on really basics of rebuilding streets and sidewalks, not worrying so much about creating grand visions, particularly outside of village centers, but just getting the basic work done. Number two, residents have to have a very clear understanding as to when their streets and sidewalks are going to get done, and then we have to live by that commitment. If we tell you it's going to be two years, and we do it in a year and a half, we're heroes. If we tell you it's going to be two years, we do it in four years, we've done a bad job. That's critical, and we need to do a much better job in that area, frankly. There's no excuse for where we are now.
Well, you've led right into this question, and I have to ask you whether you support or oppose the referendum repealing the overnight parking ban. Uh, let's start with you, Mark.
Uh, I don't favor the referendum. I think the overnight parking ban serves salutary purposes. Uh, we do have winters despite the mild winters we've had in the last few years. We do have winters of heavy snow. I'm, uh, old enough to remember 10 years ago when we had 100, uh, 100 inches of snow in a, in a year, uh, and we had streets blocked for months as it was difficult to park. With that said, I've said repeatedly, I'll respect the will of the voters. The voters vote to lift the overnight parking ban. I'll abide by the wishes of the voters. We will, in certain areas of the city, need to come up with solutions, and I can tell you that the city council struggled with this for a long time and has not been able to come up with them yet, and that's another reason to favor keeping the overnight ban in place.
Al?
I am in favor of keeping the ban in place, especially without a plan. Uh, there are some areas that may be amenable to having overnight parking. We would need to put together a, a commission of residents that could go to areas that request to keep overnight parking available in the winter and assess them. And there would be, need to be a permitting process so that, um, you would get a, a, a window sticker that you could, you know, overnight park in that neighborhood because you're a part of that neighborhood. But I think that allowing for the overnight parking ban to be lifted would encourage developers to have less parking in their developments, which would just make more money for those developers. It's also a safety issue, and I see the stop sign.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, another aspect of, uh, infrastructure basically has to do with flooding problems, and climate change has led to local flooding in several Newton neighborhoods. What will the city do to help out local homeowners who face peril as the situation worsens? Uh, let's see. Al, let's start with you, and then with that, Mark.
Well, um, I think that maybe the city could do, um, a, a tax rebate for people installing pumps into their basement, some pumps, things like that, um, with not a, not a complete rebate, but a, you know, a partial rebate off of their property taxes. We'd have to have these areas set aside and offer these people the, the opportunity to have the help.
Mark?
Yeah, some pumps are not the answer. Some pumps means that you have a problem and it's getting in your basement, and you now have to pay a boatload of money to fix it. So the real problem is what you do with stormwater before it gets in your basement. So part of that is, we're going to have to, we are working on, but we need a lot more work to do on our stormwater systems in the city. That includes catch basins in the city to make sure they're cleaned out regularly and frequently. frequently. It makes sure that in our open spaces at Edmunds Park, a Cold Spring Park where maintaining them is open spaces because those are natural places for groundwater to go. And it makes, means making sure that where we have areas and low-lying areas that are really having frequent problems, we deal with that. It means making sure that in our zoning code, we don't let builders build and create worse problems for their neighbors. And those are very concrete steps that we will take.
What about allowing homeowners with severe problems to hook back up to the city drainage system? Al?
I think that if they're, if they're willing to pay the, the costs, I think that we should, we should consider it.
Mark?
I'm certainly open to that, particularly in areas where things are already built. I, I would feel very differently in certain instances if someone was building brand-new and said, "I want to, I want to build in the stormwater system." There, I think you can say, "No, you need to figure out another solution." But if you're an existing homeowner and you have an existing problem, the city's here to help. That's what cities do and that's our job.
Okay. With Webster Woods' value and ownership now in flux after a recent court decision, excuse me, what would you do as mayor to secure Newton's ownership and preserve the land as undeveloped, biodiverse, open space for public enjoyment? Mark?
So, look, I supported the acquisition of Webster Woods when we did it. I support it today. I think it was the right thing to do. I continue to believe it's the right thing to do. We're going to have a court case to fight out. I'm going to need to look at that very carefully. I'm a lawyer, so I'm really happy to consult, and I've been a lawyer for a long time, so I'm happy to work with our legal team and understand their technical legal arguments. I'll support those and I'll support our efforts to keep the land as, as much as we can.
Al, you're a lawyer too. What would you do?
Yeah, I, I am also a lawyer. I would, I would fight to keep this as open space. I'm a big proponent of open space. I think that that makes part of Newton what it is, the Garden City. If we're all large developments and concrete, we're no longer the, the Garden City. So, I think that every chance we have to preserve open space, we should keep and take.
To what degree do you think Newton has imposed climate requirements that are too onerous? It's basically a question of how do we reach our aggressive climate goals, all good goals, without driving developers to other communities? And, let's see, we're going to start with Al.
I think that actually some of our, our regulations are too tough. Keeping track of your carbon output for commercial buildings, I think is onerous. I think it's going to keep commercial development away from the city and I think that we should step back a little. I don't think that we need to be at the forefront of this, especially where daily the technology changes. We, when you, when you, when you, remember when big screen TVs first came out and they were like twenty thousand dollars and now you can get a big screen TV for five hundred? I think that we should let Cambridge lead the way and pay the twenty thousand and when we find out what works and what doesn't, we should pay the five hundred.
Mark?
Look, climate change is really one of the critical issues we face as, as not only a city or a state, but as a country and indeed the world. So, we have an obligation, this city, to address climate change. I think for the most part, we've done a really good job in the city of doing that. We do need to be cognizant as we impose requirements of the financial burden of those requirements. That has to be factored in. We can't just pretend that something's going to cost more and say, "It doesn't matter what it costs." We need to be smart about that, but I'm not afraid to be a leader in addressing climate change and we will continue to be a leader in addressing climate change if I'm elected mayor.
Let's shift completely to something else. We've long had pockets of tension between north and south sides of the city and concern about race relations. And in the last couple of years, we've also seen a significant growth in antisemitism. Starting you, with you, Mark, what specifically would you do as mayor?
So, look, I like to think I'm, I'm really very well positioned because of my personal life and how I approach things to do that. I'm first-generation American, son of immigrants. I grew up here, went through the public schools, did all of my kids, worked for the public, City of Newton and the Rec Department and Memorial School, so I know the south side of the city. I know the north side of the city. I've been in public office, elected by the entire city for twenty years and we are members of Temple Emmanuel. So, I take issues of antisemitism very, very seriously. Look, the mayor has a bully pulpit here, okay? And as part of that bully pulpit, my job is to make it crystal clear that discrimination of any form is not okay in the city of Newton. And we will work very hard to send that message out to everyone. Every student, every resident of the city, no matter their religion, their race, their nationality, feels, needs to feel safe and secure in our city and as your mayor, I will lead in that effort.
Al, your thoughts? And not specifically about antisemitism, but the, just the whole business of divisiveness in the city.
Well, I, I think that what we need to do is, we need to bring the city together. We need to have open dialogue. We need to find out where the, where the conflicts are. I don't, I don't understand why north and south side have a problem with each other. I don't understand why people are antisemites, but I think that education and, and open dialogue is going to help and I would help, I would, I would push to have a dialogue to get that done.
Mark, some have criticized your unprecedented move to endorse candidates for city council and school committee as furthering divisiveness. How do you respond?
I have to strongly disagree with that. Throughout my political life, I haven't hesitated to endorse people. By the way, I note that Mayor Wu routinely endorses for the city council in Boston. Doesn't seem to have criticism from, for that. Look, the voters are free to disregard whom I've endorsed. That's fine. And I repeatedly promised that I will work collectively, collaboratively with whomever's elected. The day the election ends, whomever's elected, I work with them. And I'll tell you, I've demonstrated that. On the city council this year, five of my seven committee chairs did not vote for me to be president. That's fine. I chose the best person for the job. I trust I've worked effectively and collaboratively with all of them. That's how I'll work with whomever's the voters choose.
Al, how would you work collaboratively?
As a Republican in Newton, I've had to work collaboratively all of my life. You met me today. I'm not evil, am I? I mean, I'm a, I'm, I'm a personable guy. I respect other people's differences and I have my own opinions. And I would work with these people, whoever's elected. I, I chose not to endorse people. I don't think that endorsing is wrong, but I don't want to have people feel that they may owe me something. And I think that that's the best way to, to run.
Okay. Let's look back at your careers and experiences. Can you identify an area where in 2020 hindsight, you might have handled things differently? And what have you learned from what you actually-
Incidents anymore since we're a casual office and I only go into the office twice a week.
Yeah. What is your line of?
You know, say February, May, August, November, and clients in New York, Philly, Minnesota, and Boston. Unfortunately, a Boston client is solely remote.
Oh.
It's like it's Mass Medical Society and they're like five miles from my house, but they're remote because of COVID and they never went back. So.
Oh, interesting. So they never have in-person.
Yeah, no. And they used to they used to provide really great meals. Like they have their own in-house chefs and really healthy free meals for all of us. Hi Ted.
Hi.
Good to see you again.
Yeah.
So I have a I have an order here. I'm going to try to keep to which has each one of you will be the first person to answer a question and then the second person, the third person to try to alternate it. So no one's always leading off and you get forty five seconds each question to respond. He'll be letting you know when time's up. And.
You have all the power, group.
I wield it.
One Mississippi, two Mississippi can't hear anything. All right.
And if you have a need to rebut something that someone says, you know, give me a little wave or something and depending on time, I'll say, I'll give you the chance. Sometimes I might say not go with a rebuttal because we're running out of time or something. And rebuttals are thirty seconds.
Pam, do you know Carol?
She's dating to show up for something. Get him to move up.
So how many debates have you been in this this term?
This will be the third.
Yeah, the Legal Women Voters one is sort of like a debate. They don't call it that, but a little bit like that.
Yeah, it's a league.
The speed dating and the races, even though it's supposed to be like a Q and A, it's a little bit like a debate as well.
And then there's the Commerce Chamber of Commerce. Did they do one?
Yes, that's the three. So there's the League of Women Voters, one they film in the studio. Then there's the Chamber one. Then there's this one. And then there's the Legal Women Voters Day at the Races, which their format I find to be a little closer to one of these venues.
It's funny, people so are so responsive to the once a year.
Hello, hello.
For the newspapers and I wish we, you know, classed two thousand dollars.
What?
Speak into the mic.
Well, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, nine, eight, seven, six.
What do you want me to do?
Speak.
Okay.
Hello, hello, hello? Does that work?
Yeah, having the light closer to you is always better.
Yeah, Lisa, you probably should put it a little closer here.
He gave me the okay though, so.
I used to set up for the Board of Alderman. We used to set up the equipment there and I helped out. And I we always did this, the sound check. I just kept saying one through ten through one until they okayed the sound volume.
Mike?
Okay, well, so we've already laid out the format for this. I think it's published and things. So I'm just not going to go through all of that. Chris Pitts, I'm the president of the Waberry Council, probably area council committee. I won't go through all of that either. I'm just going to introduce Alan Spadick, our moderator. Alan's a long time Oh, I should probably use the microphone. Let me use yours.
Please.
All right, all right. Let me just.
Just return it when you're done.
Here we go. All right. So Alan's a longtime Newton resident and homeowner since nineteen ninety-three. He's a reporter and board member for the Fig City News and also serves on the board of the Coolidge Corner Theater Foundation in Brookline. He's a managing principal at Maketa Investment Group, holds a designation of chartered financial analyst and is a graduate of Brandeis University. And we are proud to have him here today with some wonderful candidates.
Thanks, Chris. First, I'll introduce the three candidates. First, to my immediate right, Lisa Gordon. Lisa is a native of Newton, a graduate of Newton Public Schools, a parent of two Newton South High School graduates, and the executive director of the Acton Food Pantry. Her background is rooted in advocacy and will be a transparent, collaborative, and independent leader who puts residents first. Next to Lisa, Ted Gross. Ted has lived in Newton since nineteen sixty-one and graduated from Newton South and Northeastern University. He helped manage his family's Cleveland Circle Deli after his father's passing and is active in democratic politics, serving on local and state committees and as clerk of New TV. And then finally, Sean Roach. Sean holds degrees from Yale and Cornell Law Schools. He's a former Bronx County Assistant District Attorney and has worked for over fifteen years as a software product manager, mostly in healthcare IT, a Newton Center resident and former member of the Traffic Advocacy Group. Sean is a longtime transportation, housing, and climate advocate. So in response to the four-area council's recent survey, residents said their their top concerns are how Newton is being run and how that affects them. Concerns include municipal taxing and spending, keeping homeownership affordable, supporting schools, transparency about influence in policymaking, strengthening our commercial tax base in local businesses, protecting the environment, genuine resident participation in shaping decisions about village centers, infrastructure, public facilities, and quality of life. Of the respondents, seventy percent have lived in Newton over twenty years, forty-five percent are sixty-five or older, and another forty-five percent are forty-five to sixty-five years old. Survey respondents are engaged Newton residents who will likely be voting in your election. Off to the questions. First question was for Lisa. Tell us about your past service to Newton and other aspects of your background that equip you to represent constituents. And do you believe voters elect you to represent your views or to represent their diverse views?
I'll start from the top. I feel that what residents are really looking for, and I think the past few elections have shown that, is a city councillor who will represent their points of view, who is really good at being a leader, pulling disparate views together so that we can act in concert to get the best outcomes possible. I don't believe that I'm being elected as a trustee of just what my views are and you've elected me. And so all that matters is what I think. I've been since I moved back to Newton in the early noughts. I've been a leader in my community, setting up local advocacy groups that worked on village centers. I worked in the Newton School System to save the Jazz program and I worked to save the Strings program when they were both being under threat of being cut. I was, I got to stop, but I've been on numerous different committees.
Thank you. Ted, what your answer to that question?
Could you?
Sure. Tell us about your past service to Newton and other aspects of your background that equip you to represent constituents here.
Well, I've been active in the community since I graduated high school. I've got involved to various local organizations back in the seventies where we dealt with environmental issues. And then later on, I got involved in democratic politics. And as to whether my views are the residents' views, I believe that I should be listening to the voters that elected me and the views that I push forward, just an indication of where I'd like to go, but.
Thanks. That's that's the time's up. Sean, same question?
So I've been an advocate on transportation and housing issues for over twenty years. And why I'm running is because the issues that matter to me are resolved in city council. In essence, that's where the action happens. As for representing my views or the voters, there's a great mechanism. It's called politics. And if you don't represent the voters, then they're going to kick you out.
Thank you. Next question, starting with Ted. Newton has a strong mayor form of government that greatly limits the power of the city council. Do you support changes like the city council having its own attorney, more say over hiring of department heads, and authentic participation in shaping the city budget? And then address whether those changes should be voluntary and informal or through a charter change. Ted, your answer.
Okay, well, the charter, I believe, is pretty specific that the mayor proposes and the city council disposes. But as to, you know, we could take something away, but we the council cannot add anything to the budget. And that, you know, if enough councillors are interested in something, maybe we could talk with the mayor. But maybe there should be a slight charter change to allow input from the council if enough councillors think it's important for the for the city.
Thank you. Sean, your answer.
So a few things. One is, in a strong mayor form of government, it's essential that the city council and the school committee operate as a check and a balance against the mayor. And so we need to make sure that we are independent voices. And I am an independent voice and will be. As for making changes, we are constrained by state law in terms of what kinds of government we can have. And I don't know enough to answer the specifics about attorney and other questions. Certainly be something to look into.
Thanks. Lisa?
So yes, we have a strong mayor type of government in Newton. However, the mayor gets to decide how they want to exercise that. And when you have a really strong, positive leader, they want to work in collaboration. What I'm hearing from what I believe will be our future mayor is that that is his outlook. And what does that mean? It means working collaboratively with the city council. It means when you're hiring department heads, that you may set up a committee of city councillors to help with that review process. That's what's done when we hire fire chiefs. That's what's done when we hire our police chiefs. So it is a choice that the mayor makes to decide how they want to use that power. And I am hopeful that the future going forward will be one where we collaborate with the school committee, where we collaborate with other city councillors, and we collaborate with the mayor. And I do think the city council should have its own attorney.
Thank you. Newton's ARPA and other federal COVID monies are spent. Federal and state aid cuts are happening. Survey conducted by the area councils indicated little support for tax increases or overrides. Do you agree? And what ideas would you bring to improve Newton's fiscal health? Sean?
So in the long term, we really have a choice between more taxes or more growth. We're facing headwinds that are outside the control of the city in terms of healthcare, in terms of cost of goods. We are generally a human being driven organization and those costs are going up. In the very short term, there are some things we can do with OPEB to maybe flatten out some of our obligations. In the long term, the choice is between growth and taxes, and I'm in favor of growth. And in the medium term, I don't see how we're going to avoid a tax override. And I think the folks who are involved in these races know that and we should be honest about it.
Thank you. Lisa?
So I up until we started talking about overrides, I would be in agreement with what Sean had to say. We need to look at growth. We need to look at preserving our commercial base. We have to look at the levers that are available to us and decide as a community what our priorities are. There are two times types of debt exclusions or two types of overrides. One is a debt exclusion and one is operational. Operational ones can be very divisive. They can be very hard on our senior population. And it's something to really, really be thoughtful about. And I think if we're going to ask for that, the work needs to be done to show exactly why. However, a debt exclusion tends to be a little bit more popular. They can be used for things like a new elementary school, a new police station. They 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 tend to be less divisive in our community. So I think it's an opportunity for a discussion on how to move forward on that.
Thanks. Ted, your thoughts about tax increases, overrides, and other ideas to improve Newton's fiscal health?
Well, tax overrides, because a lot of people have limited budgets based on sampling you indicated with people over sixty-five and even people forty-five to sixty-five. Their budgets are tight and the two and a half overrides are very limited on their very tight on their budgets. And as to other things that can help with the budget, maybe have businesses come into some of the areas of the city that have vacant stores and encourage that that type of thing to increase our tax base there.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to question four. Residents are concerned about the environment and want to protect the environment and address climate change. What steps would you take to include constituents in planning and policymaking about public works, open space, wildlife habitats, tree cover protection, burdo, and incentivizing renewable energy? We'll start with Lisa.
So I definitely think as a community, we could do a better job of engaging more of our citizens. We have a lot of different, you know, Green Newton. We have a person who's working on climate in City Hall. But we're not always getting the message out as well as we should to our residents about the opportunities that there are. I recently did a tour of Cold Spring Park, which was an unbelievable lesson in biodiversity and the treasures that we have in Newton. And very few people have that opportunity. So I believe it's something that we could start with the schools to bring people in. We could then reach out to residents to really engage them and not be handpicking people. I'm also a big proponent of looking at a biodiversity plan. And I think many residents in our community have expertise in this area. And we should be bringing people together to enhance our climate action plan.
Thank you. Sean, your answer?
So people have a lot on their plates. And one of the things that we need to do is not just feed more information out to people, but deliver the information that they need. And we need to be able to have a way of doing our messaging out to the community
energy from fossil fuel to other types of fuel. And maybe the city could, like, have a, a buy-in effort for groups of citizens so they can get a discount and make sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Right back at Ted. Another question for you. Newton has seen its commercial tax base shrink. Commercial tax rates, as you know, are higher than residential tax rates and generate lower costs in services. Has Newton allowed too much commercially zoned land to be converted to residential? What steps would you take, if any, to restore Newton's commercial tax base and support local businesses?
As to supporting local businesses, that, that would be encouraging businesses to, to come into, as I said, started to say in the previous question, that we have a lot of storefronts that are empty and encouraging businesses to come in, come into those stores that, and provide a city department that would help them go through the process of the paperwork that they need to get their businesses up and running.
Thank you. Lisa?
I do not agree with the city when we have allowed commercial to then turn into resident. At the end of my street, there was a wonderful little shopping area. There's a great housing complex that's there. I'm not clear on why they couldn't have kept the first floor commercial and built the residential above that. I wasn't a fan of the special permit when Northland has gone back and asked if they could take the commercial that they had allocated and turn that into residential. I think that we were premature in allowing that. I think that we really have to be careful when we're looking at projects about losing more commercial. And we're continuing to do that. There's a new development that's coming in, in, again, on Washington Street, and we're going to take six commercial, and it's going to go down to two. So it's something we have to pay attention to. In terms of helping our businesses, we could really beef up the EDC. We have to be advocates. We have to know what people in our town want commercially. We have to be able to go out and get that. I think it's really important.
Sean, your answer to the question about the commercial tax base and commercial development?
So there's really two questions. Let me start with the local businesses. When Bigelow Cleaners, which was a family-owned, longtime business, had finally shuttered, the TTERD, not DDERD, the owner said, you know, we resisted residential development in Newton Center for the longest time, and we've come to realize that what we need is feet on the streets. So we need to have more homes near our commercial areas. That's what's going to make them successful. As for giving away residential land, two things. One is, Northland's going to generate an enormous amount of tax revenue. And number two, there's no market for Class A real estate, and they couldn't get funding for it. So we're, we didn't give anything away. We're just stuck in an economic cycle that is not favorable for commercial development.
Thank you.
Could I say something?
Sure.
I, I would just like to point out that there's a local dry cleaner right near Northland. And because the Clark's Building was closed and that commercial was closed, they, as a direct result, are finding it difficult to stay open. And they have made that connection themselves. So it's a much more complicated than just saying, you know, there wasn't development in the middle of Newton Center. It's, it's an ecosystem, and we really need to be paying attention in Newton to that ecosystem.
Thank you. Next question. In theory, hiring consultants represents savings because Newton is not hiring more employees with associated benefits. But Newton's record is uneven with some consultants on open-end, no-bid contracts. Consultants sometimes dictate policy by engaging in public engagement with preordained results. Money spent on consultant reports sometimes end up shelved. As a city councillor, what would you do to increase transparency and ensure consultants are cost-effective? Sean?
You need specialized, specialized expertise often. That's number one. We need to be, that's a really tough question for forty-five seconds, to be honest with you. There are going to be occasions where we do not have in-house staff with the expertise. On the other hand, we've also let our in-house staff lose expertise because we're not hiring full-time staff. And so generally speaking, we have to avoid staffing, to avoid staffing that limits our areas of expertise, to avoid the associated costs and benefits. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. Ted, same question. Again, this relates to using consultants for doing city work and the associated processes around that.
The question is, with having associates?
The question that, that the city often hires consultants, in part because it's cheaper than hiring full-time staff, but that some consultants seem to dictate policy, and also sometimes work done by consultants ends up being ignored, leading to unnecessary wastes. Do you have any thoughts about the use of consultants in city policy?
Well, consultants are good to advise either the mayor or the council as to what direction to go. But as to setting policy, I, I don't think consultants should be the one setting policy. It should be either the mayor or the council that comes up with a policy that they'd like to follow.
Thank you. Lisa?
So a couple of questions ago, Sean mentioned the city website. And I'd like to address the transparency part of your question, which is, if we're going to be using consultants, it should be easily findable on the city website. What consultants were you, were you using? What RFPs have gone out? Who's applied and submitted RFPs? Who was chosen? What is the amount that we're paying for those consultants? This is all information that is deeply hidden. And as residents, we should be looking at that. And if the trade-off is going between hiring people and hiring consultants, if the information is easily available, it will help the community know whether these decisions are good ones or not. Additionally, we often hire, I live in Newton Center. We've had three or four parking studies done in Newton Center. And I don't believe that before these were, we put out to bid, that we wanted to hear what the outcomes were because
Thank you. Thank you.
people weren't listening.
Next question, back to you, Lisa. What steps would you take as a city councillor to ensure homeownership and rental homes remain affordable for Newton residents? And just broadly, do you have other housing thoughts, notwithstanding a brief fifteen-second, forty-five-second timing?
Yes. Well, I think Sean was right when he said all these questions really are a much more complicated. But there's a really awesome project that I've just learned about that's going on in West Newton, where an older housing unit, I think it's a hundred and twelve, is getting money from our Affordable Housing Trust so that we can keep the rents there at workforce rental levels. I think that's brilliant. I think, as a community, we have decided, and I agree with, we are a much better community if we can have teachers living here, if we can have firefighters living here, our police. And one of the best ways to do that would be to have workforce-level rents. So it's a great way, since so many of the new developments are charging really high-end rents. If we could do more of these projects so that we can continue with affordable rents, I think it would be a great victory for Newton, because our long-term renters, as well as our homeowners, are what make us an incredible community.
Ted, same question. You know, what steps would you take to ensure that homeownership and rental homes became, remain affordable? And any other thoughts about improving the housing situation in Newton?
Well, with, with homes that need, they, you know, it's a complicated question. But homes that are torn down to make place, way for new housing, a lot of that is unnecessary if they were to refurbish the home. And that would keep it less expensive instead of the three billion dollar home. And some of those homes environmentally, if you tear them down, the pollution of the air from older homes, by, by refurbishing, you're, you're able to keep it at a less expensive home.
Thank you. Thank you. Sean, same question. Housing broadly and keeping how ownership affordable?
Okay, so I think we need to distinguish between keeping current stock affordable and keeping homeownership and renting affordable. Without subsidy, we're not going to keep current homeownership affordable, either government subsidy or subsidy by the current owners to the future owners. In terms of keeping homeownership as a general category and renting affordable, we need more housing options. We need more housing types that are legal in the city, and we need more of the, more housing. And that's the way we're going to solve the problem. Now, getting into the details of that, we don't have that time.
Thank you. Next question is, we're starting with Ted. Newton's schools face real challenges and account for over two-thirds of the budget. As a city councillor, how would you collaborate with the school committee, teachers, and parents to strengthen schools while protecting taxpayers and maintaining vital services?
Well, with dealing with schools, I believe the state law forbids the council from interfering with the, the running of the schools. And it would, and the mayor works with the, as member of the school committee, would present the budget to the city council. The council could lobby the, the school committee members as to what they hear from the voters, and also talk with the mayor as to different things in the budget. But as to the actual budget itself, it would depend on the school committee's choice.
Thank you. Sean?
So one of the things that was missing from the, your answer, or your question, was how do we work with the unions? And one of the things that's really distressing about this current school committee and city council race is, is the demonizing of the unions. We've got to work with unions as partners. They're only sixty percent of the, the budget. There are plenty of things that are, the headwinds I talked about earlier, that are putting pressure on our budget. We need to be advocates on, in City Hall, on the city council, for healthy collaborative relationships between the unions and the school committee and the parents. And we're not seeing that, and it's very disappointing.
Thank you. Lisa?
I think some of that work has already begun. The city council has invited the school committee to come to Programs and Services meeting. So there's a lot more communication, which I think is crucial, between the city council and the school committee. I would agree with Sean that the unions are also very important. My daughter just started her tenure as a public school teacher in Maine, and that came as a direct result, I believe, from the mentorship that she received in Newton South. And the, again, what I always come back to is a systems-thinking, whole-solution approach, which was, we have to really be looking to work together as a community and make sure that everybody is listening. It is particularly divisive right now. I was on the school strategic planning this last fall, and you could see it. But I believe there are steps that can be made to bring us all together.
Thank you. Next question, starting with Sean. Many of the surveyed residents and business owners feel that City Hall consultants and developers drive changes to village centers and public spaces with little real input from the community. As a city councillor, how would you ensure genuine community participation before decisions are made?
Legwork. There, there are going to be identified, well, so I used to be, I've recently changed careers. I used to be a software product manager. And what we do is we identify stakeholders. We identify their needs. We identify the overall goals. Ideally, it's a shared goal, and we work together. Now, that requires legwork. It requires going and talking with the business owners, the landlords who are not always, you know, having aligned interests, community members, and the folks at City Hall. It's a lot, right? One of the things is, is there's a lot of information. We've got to figure out how to be judicious about engaging folks so that we're not overwhelming them. And when we, when they do want to be engaged, that we haven't tapped them out. Lisa?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of things. I would say that the Riverside project that's just come back has done a really great job of working with the community there about what their needs are and what they'd like to see, and that the new project that's now going to be going through, it seems that the neighborhood and the developer are both happy. And I agree with Sean that that has to do with legwork and putting in the hard work of asking questions. But then when you ask the questions, you have to be willing to listen to what the answers are and act on them. I think one of the problems we've had is that we have this community involvement. Newton Highlands would be a great example of this, where they're looking at the beautification and improvement, and they have these meetings. But what happens is residents take their time to come and give their input, and it's not listened to. The same thing happened with the Newton Center pilot on the, on the parking lot there. People gave their input, but the plan had already been decided. So if we're going to ask residents to give of their time and their opinions, we have to figure out how to incorporate that as well.
Thank you. Ted, same question, involving residents in decisions to changes in village centers and public spaces. How would you ensure community participation before decisions are made?
Again, that you would want to have public meetings to invite the public in before you would probably have a, a, a plan that you'd like to present to them. But you'd also want to listen to the community input at public meetings to alter the plan as the public has given their input. The plan may be the same, or it may evolve to something that the community as a whole would be willing to accept.
Thank you. Next question, we're starting with Lisa. Some residents have reported confusion and safety issues with respect to parking, traffic, bicycle, bike and scooter use, and road pilots, especially people with mobility challenges. What are your thoughts there? And how would you include all constituents before changes are made?
I think the process we've just talked about would be an ongoing one, where you would also be applying resident input to any projects that go forward. Two years ago, I had the opportunity to venture throughout Newton Center in a wheelchair to see what it was like. And I would suggest, if anyone hasn't done that on the city council, that they embark upon that, because it was incredibly enlightening. So one of the best ways to figure out how to move forward is to put yourself in someone else's shoes. I think we've done a lot of well-meaning, great projects. But again, I go back to, are we looking at the whole, whole of it? Are we looking at how everyone's going to use that? And I think sometimes we fall short of that. We have to be better about planning. Washington Street is a great example. We want traffic calming. We also don't want seniors to feel overwhelmed by lots of things on the street. And we want our local businesses to be able to have their customers get in and out of their store.
Thank you. Sean?
So I think that the, the most obvious pilot is the Washington Street pilot. And that's actually a, a good pilot. It has clearly defined goals. It has been measuring success along the way. So the Washington Street pilot has reduced substantially and noticeably, or notably, incidents along Washington Street. It's created a very good shared-use bike, scooter path, and more parking. It is also, like any other road pilot, has opportunities to be tweaked. And there are opportunities for community input into the process, and it will be tweaked. So I actually think Washington Street's a not-bad example, though I do understand that there are folks who are concerned, and, and I, I'm confident that their concerns will and are being heard.
Thank you. Ted, same question for you about traffic, safety issues. Ted, same question for you about traffic, safety issues, road pilots in Newton.
Well, with the safety issues and referring to the Washington Street trial, I think they also took some lessons from the Dedham Street reconstruction where they had zigzag on traffic going different directions. As they redevelop some of the areas, allowing bike paths, it's all going to be trial and error as they reconfigure some of these roads. And it's, it's good to test out some of the theories before they finish their construction of any area.
Thank you. Heading down the homestretch here. Division intolerance, antisemitism, racism, other forms of hate have increased nationwide and to some extent in Newton. How would you promote respect, inclusion and open dialogue as city councillor? Ted?
As to antisemitism and...
Other types of intolerance.
Other types of intolerance. It's going to be, I mean, I've practiced this regularly that, you know, I recognize people for what they, how they act and what they actually do. It's something that we need to recognize people and know that we have differences that we can all live with.
Thank you. Lisa, same question.
Yeah, hate has no place in Newton and we need to say that as a unified, strong voice, that if you are Jewish, you have a place here, if you're Islamic, you have a place here, whatever background you come from, you have a place here. And wherever we see that not being supported or we see hate speech, it needs to be called out and addressed. And all of our city councillors have a responsibility to do that. One of the best ways, though, that we can combat differences in people is by putting multiple voices and different types of people on our committees. We need to ensure that we have young people, that we have people from all different backgrounds who are all participating in our local democracy. That will do a lot, do a lot to cut across the kind of hate and some of the mistakes that our community has made recently.
Thank you. Sean?
Let me make this one very concrete. We have a city council candidate who made some comments recently about trans kids. And the parents of trans kids made it very clear that those comments were very disturbing and made those kids feel not safe in our schools. I came on social media, because I'm a social media guy, and made it very clear that those were unacceptable comments. Not a single one of the people who has endorsed him has withdrawn that endorsement or criticized him for those comments. And the people who have been campaigning with them have not criticized him nor withdrawn their support of him. If we are going to be role models, then we need to be role models.
Last question I have for today. Some Newton residents say that large real estate firms, high-priced developers wield outsized influence from policies that raise prices. Do you agree? And as city councillor, how would you ensure transparency on special permits and land use and zoning? Sean, your turn.
So we get the development we want. We write the rules and we get the development we want. Developer, I happen to live in a home that was built by a developer who wanted to make a profit. I imagine 99% of the folks who do, who live in Newton do. The developers create homes that add to our stock and reduce the upward price increases. They create affordable homes. Northland is creating 170-plus deed restricted affordable homes. So developers need to be...
Projects with the zoning permits that the city council can, you know, have some input as to what direction. And they should go also with, they can request that they have some low and moderate income housing built into their projects and any other things that are necessary also.
Thank you. Lisa?
So we've recently made changes in Newton. I think people know about the MBTA and VCOD. What that has done is allowed people to come in and develop. We approved 8,800 units, although the state only required us to approve the building of potential building, those aren't being built yet, of 8,330. And in those zones, you don't need a special permit, so you can do things by right. So we have put out there where we would like to see development, we have opened that up for people to come in. Where we haven't, then I think Riverside, I will go back to, I will also point out the Dudley Road development that's happening over by Route 9, where the developers are working with the community to come up with better and good projects. Last thing I'll say, though, is I agree with Sean that we can be proactive about what it is that we are looking for as a community and not leave it up to guesswork. And we could definitely do a better job on that.
Thank you. I'd like to, Sean, if you have a model?
Yeah, I expect that the Dudley Road project will come before the next term city council. I doubt it'll get done this year. The Dudley Road project will involve cutting down thousands of trees without that many units being added to our housing. I'm not sure that's the best example.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all of you for taking time out of a lovely Saturday afternoon here. Wish you all good luck and thank you for participating.
Thank you, Alan, Sean and Ted.
Yeah, I'll probably just give you like fifteen seconds for closing statements.
Fifteen. Oh, I thought it was thirty.
I did too. Um, you know what? I'll make it thirty. What the hell? Um, also Cyrus, just you're the first answerer of the first question, so get yourself psyched up.
Oh, I'm excited.
Chris, you're locked down. Sorry.
Oh, the one they like, yeah.
Yeah. Lock the wing in.
Yeah.
Stand up comedy.
They need longer tables.
So introduce yourself.
Well, hello everyone. It's very nice to see a very nice gathering of people here for the debates. My name is Serge Nadelkovich from the Newton Highlands Neighborhood Area Council. And thank you to all the area council volunteers who helped organize this and Chris Pitts especially, and the crew filming. It's my pleasure to introduce Alan Spatrick. He's going to be the moderator for this debate. Alan is a longtime Newton resident, and he's been a homeowner here in Newton since 1993.
Yep.
I've been here since 1992, so we're kind of even there. He's also, very importantly right now, a reporter and a board member for Fig City News. And between Fig City and the Newton Beacon, we're all very well informed these days. He also serves on the Coolidge Corner Theater Foundation in Brookline.
Board.
Oh, board. Okay, wonderful. And also managing principal and Makita Investment Group. He's a chartered financial analyst and a graduate of...
Brandeis University.
And so Alan, thank you so much for being moderator, and let the games begin.
Thank you, Serge. I'll introduce the three candidates, starting immediately to my right. John Chamanis is an Auburn Dale resident, father of three young children, a co-founder of an inner-city school, and currently managing director at Kendall Sustainable Infrastructure. With a finance background and a focus on data-driven decision-making, John cares strongly about great schools, champions practical, non-ideological solutions, supports local businesses, growth, and is committed to preserving Newton's green spaces and village character. Next to him is Cyrus Damubed. Cyrus, a lifelong Newton resident, studied at Northeastern and Harvard, and has built his career as an architectural and urban designer focused on how community engagement drives smart civic solutions. At thirty-two, he'd bring over three decades of Newton knowledge to the council as its youngest member. And furthest away from me, incumbent John Crinsman.
Josh.
Josh Crinsman. My apologies.
Just check Crinsman on the ballot, that'll be fine.
Josh is an attorney with over twenty years' experience in law and government relations. A Newton City councillor since 2017, he chairs Programs and Services Committee, focuses on fiscal balance, village vitality, and supporting seniors through mobility and small business initiatives. If after you answer a question, you want to rebut another candidate's comments, give me a small wave, and depending on timing, we may offer you a thirty-second time to rebut. Starting out, question one with Cyrus. Tell us about your past service to Newton and other aspects of your background that equip you to represent constituents. And do you believe voters elect you to represent your views or to represent their diverse views?
Thanks for the question, Alan, and thank you, everyone, for being here. So I've been a lifelong Newton guy. My kind of community focus within Newton has always been my church. I've been a lifelong parishioner, choir member, and occasional canter at Corpus Christi St. Bernard Parish in West Newton, where I've been going with my mother for my entire life. And a big part of, I think, what I would bring to the table in terms of the skills that are necessary are I'm a board member of the Boston Children's Chorus, where I am the chair of the Governance Committee and have been for five years. I've been in firm leadership. I was in firm leadership at my firm for my seven years there. So I'm capable and practiced at sort of the fiscal administrative management of a team.
Thank you.
Okay.
John, same question.
Our job is to represent the voice of the citizens. For over twenty years, I've been involved in ser-- for over twenty years, for my entire life, I've been in service. I started with Habitat for Humanity. I've been a volunteer teacher. I'm very active in my church, Our Ladies Parish, up the street from Cyrus. And I've been very involved in Newton polit-- Newton Matters for quite some time. Currently, I'm working with Green Newton on to evaluate EV buses and their initiatives. I've also been representing some of my neighbors, who have asked me to help them since they found out I was running. I've been working to help get the Burr School parking-- Burr School playground opened up. So representing the voters is our number-one job, and as a leader, what I think of my job is as a servant leader, somebody that runs a business. Thank you.
Thanks. Josh, same question.
Thank you, Alan. And thank you to you and the area councils for this fantastic day and all these debates. They're really informative and helpful for the people. So in terms of my history, since moving back, I grew up here. My wife and I both grew up here and went to the Newton Public Schools. But since moving back, I served four terms as the Lower Falls Improvement Association president. I was a co-president of the Williams PTO. I served as the chair of the Newton Charter Commission. And for the past eight years, I've been a member of the city council. And as a member of the city council, including two terms as chair of the Programs and Services Committee, I believe I've demonstrated both that you can represent the will of the people who elected you, but also stay true to the values and beliefs for which you were represented, or which you were elected in that representation.
Thank you. John, Newton has a strong mayor form of government that greatly limits the power of the city council. Do you support changes such as the city council having its own attorney, more say over the hiring of departmental heads, and authentic participation in shaping the city's budget?
Yes. I think the job of the city councillor is to represent the public. When we do not have power, it is difficult to represent the voices that are being heard. Things like having an attorney is a rational way to do that. We've heard over the last five years that people have been speaking and have been sharing their voices, but they haven't been listened to. And I think strengthening the city council will give us more ability to represent the population, the citizens.
Thanks. Josh?
Thank you for that question. I mentioned in the first response that I was the chair of the Newton Charter Commission. The Charter Commission reviewed the entire charter for the city of Newton and put forward, spent eighteen months developing a proposal to put forward a new charter for the city, which included restructuring our government and reviewing the powers within those different bodies. One of the main things that we recommended was providing counsel to the council. So legal representation to the city council explicitly and separately funded with a mandatory budget each and every year. Unfortunately, that didn't come to pass. Then, as a city councillor, I put forward charter amendments, which have to go through a process of a home rule petition. And so we passed something on the city council that required the city council to have legal representation. Unfortunately, that was vetoed by the mayor at the time. My answer is yes. I'm a strong supporter of that provision.
Thank you. Cyrus?
In addition to all having chickens, we all agree on yes on this. Yes, I would support that kind of effort to bring legal representation to the city council. And I would also support city councillors taking on the expectations of leadership, which means being great civic advocates, being great community organizers and engagers, and using that as another tool by which city councillors can represent their constituents and the citizens.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Josh. Newton's ARPA and other federal COVID monies are spent. Federal and state aid cuts are happening. The survey conducted by the area councils indicated little support for tax increases or overrides. Do you agree? And what ideas would you bring to improve Newton's fiscal health?
Thank you for that question. It's a question that municipalities across the country and states across the country are wrestling with because we are seeing diminishing federal revenues. We are seeing limited options for states to provide revenues to municipalities. And the municipalities really have to figure out what to do about that, Newton among them. Budgets are demonstrations of priorities. My first priority to this city is the Newton Public Schools. What I would like to see is us start with our public school budget, make sure that we give our schools the budget that they request, that they need, that our fantastic new superintendent, Dr. Nolan, requests, and work from there. If we need additional revenues, we need to take that to the citizens and show them why it is that we're asking them for additional revenue.
Thank you. Cyrus, same question.
So, yes, I recognize, I think we are all beginning to recognize, that almost on a daily basis, we're seeing departments and funding from the federal level basically evaporate, the kind of support that cities and states have relied on forever. We are now going to face the challenges of navigating that funding evaporation. I agree with Josh that we really need to prioritize funding our schools. In my conversation with Dr. Nolan, I said, yes, everything that you're saying, and then more. What more can we do to support our students and support our schools? And I think that as we face the reality of lack of support for overrides, we will have to look at both of the tools that are available to us. Convincing, making the case for an override and why it's valuable at the time that it's needed, and using smart strategic targeted growth to create revenue that we can then use to fund the things that we care about, including our schools.
Thank you. John?
As a finance professional, a co-founder of a nonprofit educational institution, as well as a for-profit commercial business that's focused on clean energy, this is an area that I hope to provide a lot of direction and insight to with the city council. One of the things that we need to do is look at other ways to raise money. Grant writing is one of the greatest ways that we can do. That costs nothing, and it would be an investment in a person in order to bring additional dollars. Other cities and towns around us are doing this better than we are, and we can do better. The second thing that we can do is we can invest in more public-private partnerships. And what that does is take some of our expenses off of our bottom line and turn them into assets or investments as well.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
So I want to just clarify, grant writing does cost something. It costs an employee. We have to, or multiple employees. That's salaries that we have to bring on to be able to fund the time and expense of getting those grants. And making the argument for a city like Newton, one of the richest cities in the countries, to be able to receive those grants, I think is going to be uniquely challenging. And so while I support that, we're also seeing those grants evaporate from the federal and state level.
Yes.
Appreciate that, and I think the federal and the grant places are where, some places, we can find some grants. However, there are plenty of cities and towns that are wealthier or equally wealthy to Newton that are receiving these grant monies. And what we should do is we should look at a brighter, a wider range of places. So there are many nonprofits as well that will support many of our important initiatives. Second thing is, is that an investment in an employee, if you invest a dollar in employee, and they can turn two dollars in return, that is the way you grow money. You have to make an investment and take a risk in order to get a return.
Thank you. Next question, we're starting with Cyrus. Residents indicate, obviously, that they want to protect the environment and address climate change. What steps would you take to include constituents in planning and policymaking around public works, open space, wildlife habitat, tree cover protection, burdo, and incentivizing renewable energy?
That's all?
Yeah.
Okay. We need to be great community engagers around the environment, especially because there is consensus around it. So I think that we should be leading, you know, community tours through our open areas. The Friends of the Cold Spring Park right here do a great job doing that, that can engage people on the complexities of our environment and create deeper awareness and education about how our environment works. I also think that we should be putting forward opportunities for people to, new opportunities for people that hopefully can begin to supplant or replace some of these lost federal and state opportunities around increasing sustainability in buildings, around increasing the renaturalization of our open spaces and waterways. Engage people in conversations about the complexities between invasive species and native species. Those kinds of things are the ways that we're going to be able to get people to move forward once they're fully educated around this.
Thanks. Josh, your thoughts?
Yeah, thanks. I think there's a balance. And you always have to look on the city council, the balance between your policies, your actions, and the requests you have before you. I think the city council has done a pretty good job at protecting our resources. And as an example, I'll give you the tree ordinance that my committee, the Programs and Services Committee, undertook this past, last session. So we spent about eighteen months reviewing the tree ordinance, which protects the trees in the city of Newton. It lays out what you have to do if you want to remove a tree, what you have to do in terms of replacement, in terms of payment into the city. And we were very deliberative with that, and we came up with a proposal that ultimately, I think unanimously passed the city council.
Thank you. John, your answer?
After I left my career in inner-city education, I got my degree at Babson in Finance, and I immediately started a career in clean energy because the environment was something that was critically important to me. One of the things I've learned is that sustainability and economics go hand in hand, and they actually are win-wins. Good policies are investments in the future. I do not believe this is a grassroots thing at this point in time. Newton has created an incredible clean energy action plan. We just need to put the finance to it and pull it forward. And I bring the skills that can make that happen.
Thank you. Next question, John, you get to start. Newton has seen its commercial tax base shrink. Commercial tax rates, as you know, are higher than residential tax rates and generate lower costs. Has Newton allowed too much of commercially zoned land to be converted to residential? And what steps would you take, if any, to restore Newton's commercial tax base?
We've seen a lot of competition for real estate lately, not only from potential home buyers, but from investors, speculators, and developers. As you say, much of that has become more residential than it has been commercial. Some large developments have shrunk their commercial footprints. We talk a lot about the importance of having mixed use, but we're not really seeing that happen. I believe strongly in small business, not only because I'm a business owner and I feel strongly for those people, but because I think they are critical components of our community. If you look at businesses like Johnny's and O'Hara's and the Village Bank, those are all local businesses that reinvest regularly. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to increase our, I would like to increase our spending and our economic development in order to do a better job of supporting those local businesses and increasing our commercial tax bases.
Thank you. Cyrus?
So I think, you know, as you said, our tax base is quite imbalanced. We have ninety, approximately ninety-two percent of our taxes come from residential, or from single-family residential in particular. So I think we do need to find smart strategies to expand our commercial tax base. One of those that I believe could work is looking at our underused and unused industrial and manufacturing districts and zoning with options, so creating buy-right zoning there for multifamily, for residential, for mixed use, and commercial development. The commercial market is, this is the world that I've been working in for the last seven years. The commercial market is really bad right now. It's quite difficult to get into. But I don't want to start a planning process when the opportunity is here and on its way out the door. I think we need to be planning for those opportunities, excuse me, for those opportunities now, so that when they come through the door in three or five years, we're able to take advantage of them and have, put a plan in place for them.
Josh, your turn.
Yeah, thank you. I think our commercial tax base is really important to the city. And so we should be doing what we can to support both the businesses that are here, but also to bring new businesses into the city. We're seeing an alarming number of empty storefronts at the moment, and that's very troubling. And so what our businesses tell us is that they need people. They're telling us that they need more housing to house both their employees, to bring customers in, to help support those businesses. So one of the best things we can do to help our business is actually expand our housing base. But we can also do that without giving up our retail and commercial space. And as a very small example of this, I will point to the Riverside Development, which is now proposed to be seven hundred and fifty units of housing and about twenty thousand square feet of retail. I have actually been pushing to increase the amount of retail at that location because I think it'll help both the development as well as the community around it.
Thanks. Looks like, John, you... Looks like, John, you have a rebuttal?
Thank you, yeah. What I'd like to say is I I think that we do need to increase our commercial and retail through better planning and pulling the right retail and the right type of commercial. The entire commercial market is not failing. The large format, 100-square-foot commercial space is, but smaller footprint, shared spaces, WeWork-type are doing very well, as well as retail. And I think as a, as a city, we need to be more intentional, I think Josh mentioned, but we need to be more intentional about the type of retail that we're pulling and that we're attracting. That needs to be the city's job as far as planning that.
Thanks.
Can I just?
Sure.
So, the other thing that we can do is look at our ordinances and in terms of the parking requirements that we place on new businesses. So, we have businesses that want to open and they, thank you, thank you, everybody. But we require that they build parking as a city, as part of our zoning ordinance. And what we should be doing is allowing them to build the amount of parking that they believe, so as as opposed to us adding costs onto their entry into the city, they determine what their costs are to have a successful and sustainable business.
Thank you. Question six. In theory, hiring consultants represents savings because Newton isn't hiring more employees with the associated benefits, but Newton's record is uneven in that area with some open-end no-bid contracts, in some cases consulting, consultants dictating policy by engaging in public engagement with preordained results and money spent on consultant reports that end up shelved. As a city councillor, what would you do to increase transparency and ensure consultants are cost-effective? And Josh, why don't you start?
That question seems to have been written by someone who's very down on consultants. Uh, just, it comes through a little bit if you if you really parse through the question there. I think consultants are actually an important part of what we do. I think we have public servants working for the city. We have city councillors who basically have a part-time job and we're not necessarily the experts in every area, okay? Councillors are generalists, we are not specialists. Consultants are specialists and they play a very valuable role in helping us determine appropriate policies to solve the challenges that we have before us. Transparency is fantastic, all for it. The reason, I think, some people have been down on the consultants is they have had a vision into what they're doing or what they have done and didn't like it and that's okay, but I think consultants play a very valuable role to the work of a municipality.
John?
Consultants do play an important role, the role of an expert. They can also be biased and bias is a dangerous thing. What we need to do is we need to make sure that when we hire a consultant, that we are vetting them fully, that the information is made available, both the costs and where they stand on the issues and find a moderate consultant. That being said, I think they can bring a lot of value to the table because as, I would agree with Josh, the city council are generalists. We need that level of expertise to dive down. We also need to take that information and share it with the public and get the public's feedback before we make decisions because it's the local people that we represent.
Thanks. Cyrus?
Yeah, I appreciate the tone of this question as the only person up here, I believe, who's been a consultant to the city. I was, as part of the work that I've done for the city, I was the Inclusionary Zoning Compliance Reviewer for the Northern Development, ensuring that we held the developers' feet to the fire on the affordable housing commitments that they had made as part of that project. I can tell you firsthand how that process works. We do not make any of the decisions. We are reviewing the policies and ensuring that that the developers, whoever is involved is being held accountable. The decisions are being made by the, by the, by the city council, by the various planning, various city departments and they are great decision-makers. They work hard to faithfully enact the rules and laws that are being put forward. So, I do think that consultants are an important part of the process and I think that they can be utilized really well to get the work done, of the city done.
Next question, right back at you, Cyrus. What steps would you take as a city councillor to help ensure that homeownership and rental homes remain affordable options for Newton residents and generally any other housing thoughts you would like to add?
Generally, any housing thoughts I'd like to add are, so I think there are a couple of tools that we can use here. We do have less expensive homes in the city. I would not call really any of our, of our, of our single-family homes really affordable. We do have less expensive options and we should be looking at strategies like the one that I've talked about a bit to tie together the preservation of less, less expensive homes with the preservation of trees. I think that that's a consensus kind of policy that we can get behind. I also think we know that the, that through supply, you can, supply and demand as a basic economic principle means that if we create more housing options, we will have less expensive housing options for people to be able to live in. And to do that, we need to be able to create multi-family unit, multi-family, multi-unit buildings at and near our, in our village centers and around our public transportation that can make the city more affordable for people.
Josh?
Demand for Newton real estate sets the price. Today, not only homeowners are looking to buy the property, speculators, developers, institutional capital are all demanding those same parcels. That's driving costs up. We need to protect the naturally affordable occurring houses. These are the smaller houses on smaller lots. We have that and Cyrus and I fully agree on that. We also need to strive to create more ownership opportunities. A lot of the new development that we've seen has been high-end, has been high-end, high-rate rentals. That's not creating affordability and that's not creating equity for any of these people. Finally, if we look to increase the supply of affordable units, we need to update our inclutable, our, our inclusive zoning ordinance. We need to make sure that our developers are paying a fair price into the, when they buy out of it. And finally, we need to work with true nonprofit developers to increase the supply of truly affordable houses.
Josh, your thoughts?
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad John mentioned the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance because it is one valuable tool that we have and and the city council appropriately and regularly reviews the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance to make sure that we're getting affordable, quote-unquote, affordable units constructed along with the additional units that we're seeing built around the city. I agree with Cyrus here that, that the biggest thing we can do to put downward pressure on the price of housing is to increase the supply. Like Cyrus said, I think the simple laws of supply and demand have demonstrated in the past that additional supply is the biggest tool you have to help contain those costs for individuals looking to move into the community.
Thank you.
Can I, can I add something here?
Sure, you can.
I think when we talk about affordability, we are really perhaps in many cases using the wrong word. There is very little in Newton that is actually affordable and that is going, you can look at our 2016 housing report to confirm that unless we change something fairly drastically, that's going to stay that way. When we talk about renters versus homeowners, frankly, I have no hope of buying a home in this community, none at all. And nobody that I grew up with who's 32-years-old, who grew up in this community, has any hope at this point of, of owning a home that they could raise a family in. We need to do something that makes it possible for young families and for seniors to be able to continue to live here affordably.
John?
I'm a young family and I afford Newton. I started, my first house was in Watertown, it was the first place I can afford. It was an 800-square-foot condo built for the vets returning from the war. I lived there, I built equity in that home as an owner, not as a renter, and I was able to put up enough of a pittance to be able to buy a property that a developer didn't want to buy. It was the worst house in the best neighborhood. I now moved up the street because I built equity and I was able to move on. So, I think it's, I think it's really a holistic perspective that we should be taking here. It, it is hard and affordability is an important thing, but I think we also need to look at all the stories when we look at affordability.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
There's nothing wrong with what you did, John.
Thank you.
And I think it's great and it's wonderful that you, you and your lovely family live here. I am 32-years-old and, not to make this a thing about age, I'm a little bit younger than both of you and, and the reality is that 15 or 17 years makes a huge difference in what is possible. That, that market that you both bought into is gone for people my age unless you are making a boatload of money. If the, only the wealthiest people are able to come and live and, and buy into this community. And there, it just is not realistic that someone, sure, thank you.
I'm just gonna add one thing here because they did. We all live here, which is great, so obviously something worked. We all got here, that's wonderful. But when you set policy and when you, you set your priorities and when, when you look at the ordinances and you set zoning, what you're talking about is the future and you're talking about who's going to be able to move here, who's going to be able to live here. And I think it's important that we have a diversity of our housing stock so that a diversity of people and individuals are able to move into the community.
Thank you.
Agreed, agreed.
Newton schools, we all know, face challenges and account for over two-thirds of the budget. As a city councillor, how would you protect taxpayers and maintain other vital city services? John?
This is an area that got me interested in Newton civics. I looked at the budgets for the past 10 years of the city budgets. I crunched the numbers and I determined that we were systematically funding our schools less and less over that period of time, we were funding other areas more and more. What that means is that we have the ability to move levers, to take money from one place and put it to another. One of those areas that we've overfunded and we are eight years ahead of schedule is funding our pension obligations. That is a long time. If we just took half of that and reallocated some of that money, we could fund our schools fully and still meet our pension obligations according to our actuarial analysis.
Thank you. Josh?
Thank you. As I mentioned in, I think, an earlier question, the schools are my number-one priority. And when it comes to budgeting as a city, I think that's where you demonstrate what your priorities are and I would like to see this city fund the schools like they are our number-one priority. I don't think it's over two-thirds of the city budget, but you know, I think it depends what you include in that calculation, whether it's on
Benefits, etc.
Buildings, benefits, et cetera. But I think we, we owe our, owe it to our schools to fund them appropriately. When it comes to, you know, other funding priorities, we all have priorities, but if we're all up here talking about that, that the schools are going to be a top priority, I think everyone who says that has the, has to show it when they're in office.
Thanks. Cyrus?
I, I agree that I think relooking at our pension obligations and putting those onto a schedule that makes more money available in the short, short and medium term is a good strategy. I also think that we, the fact that we are currently asking citizens to engage in government by subscription, by, for, for example, by charging people to send their kids on the school bus is, is indicative of a reality that we are facing a precipitous financial cliff and we need to do a better job of, of generating income to be able to afford the things that we all know and love here, which are our schools and our open spaces and our infrastructure. And I believe that generating revenue through smart targeted growth in our village centers and around our transportation and using that revenue and reinvesting it in our schools is the right answer.
Josh, many of the surveyed residents and business owners said that they feel that city hall developers, consultants drive changes to village centers with little real input. As a city councillor, how would you ensure, or how do you ensure genuine community participation before decisions are made?
Well, one, one of the ways to get community participation is the special permit process, which, which occurs around large developments and every special permit process includes public comment. In addition to that, however, if city councillors are doing a good job, they are talking to their neighbors, they're talking to their community, they're talking to folks in and around proposed developments and in and around the village centers during those debates and during that process. In fact, we should be talking to them regularly so that we have that input even going into those debates and going into those discussions. Like many have said, we should have an idea of what it is that we want to go into those places before those developments are proposed. And I think the Village Center Overlay District was a really good example of those affirmative steps to say, this is where we want development, these are the types of things that we want, here are the incentives to do this type of development over that type of development, now come and get it.
Same question, Cyrus, about community involvement in major public areas and development.
So, I've worked in community engagement for, for basically the whole beginning of my career and I know that the process by which community engagement happens meaningfully results, it means that you are not going into things with a predetermined conclusion. You have to be, community engagement means going forward, designing the questions even together, designing the questions with community, working through them, then designing the answers together. As an architect who's worked in, who's done community engagement, I believe that that's a special skill that I would bring to the council because it would mean that a process by which we say, great, I've, we're listening, here's an answer, an option that we're putting forward and then let's work through the final conclusions together. So, and I think that community engagement as part of our processes, whether it's in special permitting, whether it's in zoning, in all of the ways that we make decisions together, is a crucial part of how we're going to get anything done in a way that involve, that creates real buy-in and meaningful impact.
John, what say you?
I agree that the special use permit and these public comment periods are really important. I think the things that Cyrus talked about are, are natural and I think we can always do a better job of engaging. Where I think the breakdown is occurring is in two places, is in the listening and in the implementation of what we're hearing. And I think number one, change needs to occur and we asked, we talked about that earlier. Can the city council have a little bit more authority in this so they can actually represent the voices of the people? And then the second is, is the city is negotiating with developers when things are being planned, not the city council. That's being done behind closed doors. That information needs to make it out into the public and then the public can actually be engaged and be knowledgeable. Those are the two changes that we need to make.
Thank you.
I'm just, can I jump in? I, I actually think, especially through the, the special permit process, but also through zoning, that is the city council negotiating with developers. That is a process that shows, I, I think in some ways, you know, you spoke earlier about public-private partnerships. Put zoning, put by right zoning on top of a proposed development, that's a public-private partnership.
And just to clarify, I mean, I, I'm, if I said the wrong thing, forgive me. I said the city is negotiating, not necessarily the city council. So, city employees are doing negotiating, not the city council. And I think that, that needs to be brought more to the city council.
But the city council is doing that during, during the process
At some level.
When they permitted, and again, through zoning. That's the city council determination right there.
At some level, but it's not being heard.
Thank you. Some residents report confusion and safety issues with traffic, parking, bike and scooter use and road pilots, especially people with mobility challenges. How would you include constituents before changes? And if you want to add your comments about the winter overnight parking ban, feel free. Cyrus?
In 45 seconds or less. You got it.
Sure, maybe I'll take those backwards and I'll start with the parking ban. I don't know why I did that to myself, but sure. So, on the parking ban, I think on November 4th, we're all going to decide this together as a city. I believe that as someone with a background in architecture and urban design and planning, my skills on the council would be useful to whatever comes from that decision. It's going to, no matter whether it's a yes or a no to other repeal, it means that we're going to have to take a more precise look and design more nuanced plans to stop having this one-size-fits-all solution that isn't a solution. That's step one. What was the?
Really just other thoughts about confusion with traffic
Sure.
Scooter usage.
I think that the, the most important thing has to be safety and that means safety for everybody on our streets. It also means accessibility for everybody on our streets, from our transportation system to our roads, to the ways that we get kids to school with safe, safe routes to school. So, we have to be prioritizing safety, that should be the number-one consideration. The next consideration needs to be the climate. How are we improving our sustainability future, our lowering emissions and making a more sustainable environment for all of us?
Thank you. Josh, I'll just restate the question since it's a long one.
The six of, six questions.
Some residents report confusion and safety issues with traffic, parking, bike, scooter use and, and road pilots, especially people with mobility challenges. Your thoughts there and again, parking ban optional?
Yeah, I want to talk very definitively about the parking ban. No, what I'll say is this. I, I, I remember when there was a bike lane being striped on Walnut Street and there was an uproar and people were saying, where's this going? It's not going anywhere, no one bikes, this is crazy. We now see bike lanes in a large part of the city. We see more and more bikers out there, we see more and more scooters out there. I am an advocate for the separated and protected bike lanes and pedestrian amenities. I think they're valuable to our city. I think in conjunction with traffic calming measures, they make the city safer and more navigable for commuters and, and folks' transportation, of all types of transportation. When it comes to the parking ban, I will say that I am not a fan of the overnight parking ban because I think it is a one-size-fits-all solution for the whole city that doesn't actually fit all. I am an advocate for neighborhood-by-neighborhood plans that do make sense and I think the city council years ago had the wisdom to create a traffic council, which takes up matters like that every month.
Thank you. John?
So, I believe with traffic and traffic patterns, keep it simple is one of the best things that we can employ. Safety needs to come first. I think the amount of paint and, and equipment that have been installed make it difficult for people to know what the rules are and what's right and what's safe. That said, I'm open to pilots, try something, evaluate it and then modify, be willing to Be willing to modify. Regarding the parking ban, I think I share both of these gentlemen's perspectives that a one-size-fits-all probably isn't the right answer. What I like is that it made it to the ballot. I like that it's democracy in action. So while I'm going to vote no for the parking ban, I'm going to vote yes for the city council to pick it up. And as you say, maybe it's in that committee in order to address on a localized, targeted basis because it does make sense in some areas.
Last question before we get to closing statements. Division and intolerance, racism, antisemitism, other forms of hate have increased nationwide and to some extent in Newton. How would you promote respect, inclusion, and open dialogue in city government and community life? That is John.
As a member of a large family, a large diverse family, and a business owner who represents many people and requires the input of many people, what I've learned is that having open and transparent dialogue is the most important thing that you can have in order to make good decisions. Respecting people's rights to have opinions is critical within that. In the city, we need to make sure that everyone has an ability to be listened to. I think there are three things that we could consider for that. We could create more community spaces for cultural and diverse celebrations. We can host forums for dialogue and safe places for people to talk and share and learn. And finally, we should promote diversity in our workforce and our leadership through mentor programs.
Cyrus?
I think this part of... I agree with a lot of what John has said here, but I also think that a big part of this means leading from... Leading as leaders. So we need to be engaging in the kind of civic, civil-friendly, trust-building discourse with each other as city councilors, if I'm lucky enough to be voted in, with the mayor's office, with the school committee, with everybody involved, so that our residents can see what it looks like to have differences, work through them together, and get good things done. I think that that's a key way that we can lead by example. I also think that we need to... It's not just about opening the doors and letting people in. It's about actually going out, doing the work, inviting people in, bringing people to the table, understanding when the table isn't working for them. That real diversity, equity, and inclusion, justice, and liberation for everybody means the extra work that you do to make sure that the people who have been marginalized are able to have their voices heard.
Josh?
Yeah, I think that was a great response. And I think we do need to be an open and inclusive community and accepting of folks of all backgrounds and all races, creeds, styles, sexual preferences. I think most of the members of our community do that, do that effectively, and I think our policies speak to that. I know that there were some comments made recently that were not viewed that way, and I think it is very important that we give each other the space to sort of work through issues that may be new to us or that we may be working through. And I think, you know, to John's credit, he issued a statement that sort of said, "I use this as an opportunity to learn. I have heard from folks." I actually want to give him an opportunity to tell us, you know, what it is that he learned because I give him credit for issuing those statements.
We'll go to closing statements if you'd like to respond.
Sure. Thanks, Josh. As a concerned parent, I've asked questions through my life in order to become the best parent that I can, in order to look out for every child's well-being. And I've had conversations on Facebook, which is not a great forum, in order to learn more. Through that process, I learned a lot. And I also desire to make sure that all children have a caring and inclusive life. I've made a statement on this topic, and you all can take a look at it. So I'm a person who's open to learning and listening, and I want to be open to dialogue as well. I think that's fundamentally important. Thank you.
For closing... Please. For closing statements, let's go in reverse alphabetical order by first name. So Josh?
I knew that's where you were headed. So very quickly, I'll just say that this is a very important election, okay? We're going to have a new mayor. We're going to have seven new members of our school committee, and we're going to have at least seven new members of the city council. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of new people in high positions in the city. I have been on the city council for eight years. I think my record speaks for itself, and I think my experience speaks for itself. I'm hoping to be a voice of... That can help us through that transition. That can be some experience that you can count on. So again, I'm Josh Prinsman. Feel free to visit joshprinsman.com. And I am hoping for a fifth term because I would like to see us continue on the progress that we have made as a city council in a number of areas, but in particular through all my work on the Programs and Services Committee. Thank you.
John?
Reverse alphabetical order?
Yes. My first name.
My first name. Got it. Missed that part of it.
It's my secret middle name.
Secret middle name. All right. I was not born into privilege. I'm the son of an immigrant father, a single mother, who taught me to look for the good in people, to respect differing opinions, and to work hard for what matters. I'm a proven leader who's volunteered taught in the inner city and founded a clean energy company. I have three children in the Newton Public Schools because I believe in public education, and I have brought family members under my roof to support them. My actions have created real change in this world. I offer the skill of financial literacy to the city council, a skill that is underrepresented and critically important to nearly every decision we make. I'm here to listen to what you have to say, to use facts and decision-making to be a servant leader. I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Cyrus, you get the last word.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you for being here, the area councils for hosting this event, Alan for moderating us, and Josh and John for continuing the conversation that we've been having in the world's longest interview. I hope that I've demonstrated to you that I have the know-how, the vision, and the care to not just get the important work ahead of us done, but also to do it in a way that we can all be proud of and that can hopefully bring us all together. We do face real challenges and stark choices ahead, especially in how we will fund the things that we all care most about, like our schools, our open spaces, and our infrastructure. I will be your independent voice on the council in facing these challenges. I will listen to you, leaning on my years of experience translating community engagement into smart civic solutions. I will similarly bring an underrepresented set of skills as an architectural urban designer, and I will bring the new voice of a new generation as the council's youngest member. I'm asking for your vote, honor before November 4th, so that we can build a Newton we can all love and all afford. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys. Thanks, Alan. Aw.
Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 ah, ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah. Da, 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 yeah, ah, ah. Ah, 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 ah.[603.11]
...reward five and what you might wish had been done differently. We'll start with you, Julie.
Okay, forty-five seconds. Okay, that's a long history as we know. First of all, we all wanted something in that area on Needham Street and we were excited to see something built. Originally, there were some concerns about the size of the development, but through a lot of work, negotiations, advocacy from the community, I think we got a better project and we're happy to see that move forward. When they came back for the special perm- revised special permit, there were some concerns about losing the commercial space. And I think that's really a loss to the community. That building is really, it is not just regular, you know, a old building you might find for office space. It's a very special building. I really feel it would have been attractive for businesses to come in. But having said that, I think that the splash park that we got built is a real amenity to the community and has brought people together. So I think that's been a real amenity. So, yes.
Thank you. Gary, would you like me to repeat that or?
No, I think I got it.
Northland and how'd it go and would you have done anything differently?
So, I've always been an advocate for the Northland project. I've always thought it was a good project. I feel like we really need the housing. The biggest concern I had with it was probably the traffic it would bring. Needham Street is a traffic nightmare as you know, but I think today, the project that we have with the loss of the community, the commercial space, is gonna reduce the, cut the increase in the, in the traffic. So I think, I think we're, we're better off now than we, than we were before. I think it's a great project. I'm really looking forward to the open space, the amenities, like Julie mentioned, the splash park and, and the rest. So I think it's gonna be great.
Okay, thank you. So this is a bit of a ta- tag on to both of your most recent comments. And by the way, when you go to Need- when I go to Needham Street, I leave the night before. Now, compared to some of our neighboring communities, Newton has seen its commercial tax base shrink in recent years. Commercial property tax rates are higher than residential tax rates. They're actually like one, one point seven five, the, the, the residential rate. And they generate, they're considered to generate less costs in terms of city services. Why has Newton allowed so much of its commercially zoned land to be converted to residential use? And what specific steps would you take as a city councillor to restore Newton's commercial tax base and prevent the loss of commercially zoned land? So Gary, we'll start with you.
So, I think I would start here by saying, we, we do need the housing. And so I don't necessarily regret that we've lost some in, if it's replaced by housing. But I do agree that, that we need to have better processes for commercial development. We need, I think, to look at some of the industrial manufacturing spaces that are, become real empty zones in the city and, and see if we can re-zone those and make commercial by right in some of those areas and, and, and look at, you know, how we can include more mixed use as well, mixed use development in our village centers to, to help our, our businesses there, to have more traffic, more business, more foot traffic, more business available for them so they can be successful.
Julie, would you like me to repeat that?
Sure.
Okay. So, compared to some of our neighboring communities, Newton has seen its commercial tax base shrink in recent years. Yet, commercial property tax rates are higher than residential property tax rates and commercial properties generate lower costs in terms of city services. Why has Newton allowed so much of this commercially zoned land to be converted to residential use? And what specific steps would you take as a city councillor to restore Newton's commercial tax base and prevent the loss of commercially zoned land?
Yeah, I think the, the loss of commercial land is a real priority, just in terms of increasing revenue for the city, which we all know that we're in a real budget crunch. So in terms of steps of increasing that, I think it's evident as a sort of a three-pronged approach. Because one, what can we do to attract businesses? And it's, we know that we need to streamline the, getting the business up and running, getting your sign out there. That's really important. Secondly, once businesses are here, we need to continue the relationship, work with them so they want to stay here. And, you know, I think that's really important, that we have that relationship if they need help with electrical or plumbing, or parking, or seating, or whatever it is, that we have established relationships with each of the businesses. And then thirdly, we have to find out why they're leaving other, going to other communities. And that's really important, to find out, why are they leaving? And so, once we have to find out their, you know, to, to really investigate and keep them here.
Would you like to add anything, Gary?
I, I think I would just add, we really need to look at the kind of costs that we add to the commercial businesses that want to move here. Things like minimum parking requirements, extra, extra, you know, requirements that we, that are not necessarily needed and allow them to build the amount of parking that they think is, is the right amount for them.
Anything to add to that, Julie? Good, thank you. All right, we're gonna shift gears here a little bit and talk about one of my favorite topics, actually. So Newton has a strong mayor form of government, one that generally limits the power of the legislative branch of our local government. And you are gonna be, one of you will be, will become a legislator. Do you support changes to shift that imbalance, such as the city council having its own, its own city-funded attorney? More say over appointees and hiring of departmental heads and senior staff with whom the city council must work on policy, and early and authentic participation in shaping the city's budget? And please address whether such changes might be voluntary and informal rather than charter changes. Okay, and I think it's, it's Julie.
Okay. Yes, we have a really strong, the mayor has a lot of power here in, in the city of Newton. That's the way the, the charter is structured. But I think it's, it's depending on who the mayor is and how to use that power. You know, holding on tightly to the power. I think real leadership comes when you don't hold on to the power so tightly. And I'd love to see the, whoever the mayor is, bring in the role of the city council, seek their advice, help them in the decision-making. It is a choice by the mayor of what he or she can do and whether, I think that would be the start, because rather than going through charter changes, it's really putting it, the onus on the mayor to be inclusive, bring in the city council and around the decision-making early and often.
Thank you. Gary, would you like me to repeat it or are you, okay?
No, I'm good. So, I think it's really important that we have an independent and separate city council from the mayor. I do support the city council having more resources and more power and, for example, having its own attorney on staff and a separate budget line for that. Because I think the city will work the best when we have independent bodies who can be checks on one another.
Thank you. Okay, next question, we'll start with you, Gary. So, how much time do you think is needed to discharge the responsibilities of a city councillor on a weekly or on an annual basis? And are you prepared to devote that level of time?
So, to me, being a member of the city council is very much like having a second full-time job. So, you know, thinking about how much you spend on your regular day job, think about the same amount of, of time working on, as a city councillor. It's a lot. Now, fortunately, unfortunately, my husband spends a lot of time out of town. So it means I have a lot of time at night. And so I, I think I definitely will have the time in order to, to devote the, the attention and time that the job of city council, a city councillor needs and deserves.
Would you like to repeat it or are you okay?
Okay, Noah, it's, it's a commitment, clearly. The number of hours, I think that depends on how committed you are to the job. And I am, look forward to it. I mean, I, I will spend my free time, you know, listening to the land use meetings in the background or listening to the public facilities in the background. That's sort of, I, I joke that it's my, my hobby a little bit, just to understand it, what's going on. So for me, to be in the meetings, I understand the, the monthly meetings and the, and the committee meetings. So, you know, I understand the time commitment. And I decided to step up because sort of this, where I am in my life, my, my kids are in college, my elder parent has come to an end and I have flexibility in the job. So I can, I can be committed to it and respond to constituents when they need something. And I think that's probably the most important reason.
Okay, thank you. Next question, I guess we, we start with, with Julie. Is there a difference between the role of a ward councillor and an at-large councillor? And if so, what is it?
I think it's slightly different. I mean, overall, you're part of the city council, you're there for all the decision-making, you're there for the conversation. So at that level, you're the same, but I think you have an added bonus. I, I see it as a bonus, as a ward councillor, that you are probably the first person that the neighborhood will reach out to if there's an issue around a sidewalk, a tree issue. And I actually see that as a privilege to be able to respond to and, and help out and get something done for a resident. Something, quality of life, something that happens, you know, that is affecting how they are feeling about living in the city. And to have that direct impact on being able to hear the problem, find out how to address it and solve the problem. To me, that's, that's really, would be satisfying and, yes, thanks.
Good, thank you. Gary?
So, I agree a hundred percent with Julie on this. I think, you know, the ward councillor is a little bit unique in that you're working on citywide issues as part of, as a member of the city council, but you're also, your constituents, your main constituency and people who contact you are generally people from just your ward. And, and you have a kind of a, I think, a special responsibility to make sure that you serve the constituents and help them out as best you can when they have issues with, with, with the city government. So, so yeah, we're in, I think we're in complete agreement on this.
Yeah, that last thing you said is especially true when your, when your other two ward colleagues decide to tell them to call you. Not that that's ever happened to me personally.
Never, never, right?
Is Josh still here? No, he left, I think. All right, this, we'll start with you on this one, Gary. Newton schools face real challenges, but they already account for more than two-thirds of the city's budgets. As a city councillor, how would you work with the school committee, teachers, parents, to strengthen our schools while protecting taxpayers and maintaining other vital city services?
So, I think, two things here. One is, we need to build a relationship between the city council and the school committee so that we really have a real collaborative relationship that, that the city council can be, the city council and the city councillors can be an ally to the schools. But I think, when it comes to the budget, the budget is a priorities document. It tells you who you actually are. You can say, a lot of words you can say about support for the schools, but when it comes to the budget, that's an expression of what your real priorities are. And we just need to start with the, with, with the schools and then move on to everything else.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's, I think we're moving in that direction. I'm really encouraged by Superintendent Nolan in terms of working with the city council and with the mayor and really bridging some of those divides. I feel like we're, we're making progress and I would hope that will continue. I think it's important that there's an open dialogue. And in terms of what to do, maybe even perhaps creating a working group or something that's special to understand the issues, for the city council to understand the issues that are going on in the school. It is so important to get that understanding, to hear from the, the teachers, the administration and what's going on, and the school committee. It's, it just needs to be a more of an open dialogue, I think. And that's what I'd love to see going forward.
Okay, next question, we'll start with Julie. And this one is, as you've been knocking on doors and meeting voters throughout Ward Five, what are they telling you? Can you tell us their top concerns about this specific village? And what are you hearing? Also as well, you know, kind of within Waban, the Highlands, Upper Falls, and how would you address those concerns?
Okay.
You know, I just wanna preface this for two seconds. The one thing, back when we did the charter and we were talking about twenty-four councillors, and I, and I didn't support that aspect of the charter reducing it. Thing I always thought about, and I'm glad this question is worded this way, is there is such a variety of issues and questions in these neighborhoods as you go throughout the city. You know, it really is, you know, it's ninety thousand people, it's eighteen square miles, but it is like all over the place in terms of, you know, the, you know, picking up trash and stuff like that. So, sorry for that. But anyway, Julie, that's yours to start.
Yeah. No, like, this has been, the favorite part of my campaign is knocking on doors. Because you, I say, you never know what the issue is, you know, someone opens the door. And three things I've heard pretty consistently, it's been around the city finances, sort of the landscape, that people are concerned around the budget. Given what's going on nationally, statewide, there are concerns. And people know that the state, the, the city finances impact everything. So that's one thing. The second thing I hear about the schools. And that's what we just talked about, how to open up the dialogue. They feel a little, like things are a little bit chaotic in terms of the schools. And how do you reduce that feeling and give them confidence back about the schools? So I think it is opening the dialogue. And third, I think here is just around, well, traffic, basically. It's somewhat of them potholes and sidewalks, but it really is around the concerns about pass-through traffic through some of the villages. And that kind of, doesn't feel so great.
Gary?
So, I think the first thing I would say is knocking on doors is also my favorite part of, of the campaign. It's really interesting and gratifying to talk to people and hear how common many of the, the, the concerns are and how, how engaged people actually are at the doors. In terms of the actual issues, I hear schools, number one, over and over again, especially in Waban. Everybody's concerned about the schools for a variety of things. The other big issue I hear, and this is big in, in Upper Falls, is the roads. And they're really concerned about the state of the roads, especially the backroads. And then the third thing I, I hear some about these, environment and climate change, especially in the Highlands.
Everybody, okay, good. I'm just looking at the time.
We're following the rules around the timing.
Yeah, we're doing well. All right, this next question, you'll start off, Gary. The survey responses indicated that Newton residents are concerned about the environment. And despite the current federal situation in Newton, your constituents want to protect the environment and address climate change as it impacts our community. As a councillor, what steps would you take to include all of your constituents in planning and policymaking about public works, public buildings, infrastructure, open space, wooded areas, wildlife habitat, tree cover, tree cover, that's a big one, and, and its restoration, birdow, and incentivizing solar power, EV, hybrid vehicles, the whole, the whole nine yards?
Is that it?
Yeah. Well, it's a big topic.
Simple question, right?
Everybody cares about it though.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it is a good question. I, I think, you know, especially with what's going on at the federal level with the environment, it's climate change-related solutions being cut left and right, clean energy solutions being, being cut. I think it's a really important question. I think the biggest part of the question that I hear is really about communication rather than about climate. And to me, a big theme in my campaign is about communication, relentless communication and talking to people all the time, everywhere, wherever you can find them. And, and talking to them about, you know, how can you get clean energy? I think we need to really lean on some of these green groups like Green Newton, the Friends of Cold Spring Park and so forth, to really help push this forward.
Yeah, I would just follow up about that. There's so many, there's some really great groups around the open green spaces. We have Friends of Cold Spring, of Hemlock Gorge, of Quinn of a Quinn. We have some with the expertise and passion that, on these groups. And I'd say we need to empower them to, and maybe help them work together to get the message out. There's a lot of information. And you have to be careful about, you know, shoving too much information with people. Sort of, you know, what are they gonna do with it all? But it's really, I think they're the ones we should look to and rely on their, their expertise and, and, and finding what people want to know. That's the other piece. There might be areas or topics that the community is really particularly involved, are interested in Ward Five. And I think we need to find out, but really maybe tailor our messaging to the folks in Ward Five and find out what they want to know about. And what do they feel like they don't know?
Thank you. Yeah, I, you know, I think actually it's an interesting thing, as one of you get on, other people in this room, I think the council should consider whether or not to actually create a committee specifically dedicated to climate and environment. You know, that would provide more of a genesis to, to create the kind of dockets and legislative changes that, that could happen.
That's an interesting proposal. I think there was a, there was a proposal to create a, an environment department, which failed recently, but I think having something in the city council that focused on that.
You have a lot of, you will have a lot of, you have a lot of power because you've got the legislative capacity there to do it. So I think, all right, this may be our last question, I'm just looking at the time. Can you give us your opinion of City Hall's public engagement efforts? And specifically related to Ward Five, the Highlands Village Centre redesign effort, the, the street work being done on Needham Street, the redesign of the intersection at Elliott and Mechanic in Upper Falls. So, I'm sure you got, save a, save a juicy one for the end here. And that is, pardon me for losing track here. Gary, you probably know where I, where was I? I think it's, I think it's Julie.
So in terms of the public engagement around the many issues and the many projects that are going on, that is something, probably one of the, I find, most frustrating and why I may be running. Because I feel like sometimes, what I've heard at the doors, and it's really resonating with me, I've said it before, that people say they feel like they're not, things aren't, are being done to them and not with them. So we've really got to figure out a way, if we're gonna seek genuine public input, we've got to, you know, act on it and do something with it and know how to implement it with. Nothing feels more frustrating to residents or anyone to, to speak and then not have your, your voice or anything, action or acknowledged. I think some of it might be just acknowledging that you have concerns and not being perceived as, you know, you're just kind of annoyed by things. So I, I'd really, just acknowledgement and then acting on whatever input you get would go a long way.
Gary?
So, this goes back to communication, which has been a big focus of my campaign. I think, first of all, you know, however much communication you're doing with people, it's undoubtedly not enough. And I think there's a critical role to be played by city councillors in getting out and engaging with voters, even knocking on doors outside of the context of an election and just getting people's input. And I think the other big thing here is the, is the city website desperately needs to be revamped. It's too hard for residents to find the information that they're looking for. And I think that's a big barrier that's causing some people to feel like they can't get any information from people, even though it may actually be there on the city website.
I, I, are we, I'm looking for, are we at time? Can you do one more? Okay. I guess it's that good they want, they don't.
They're gluttons for punishment, that's what they are.
You've been held over, you know?
No one's blocking out.
So, I would talk a little bit, maybe a little more in-depth on this. Residents report confusion and safety issues with transit, traffic, parking, bike and scooter use, a growing thing, lane marking, signage, road pilots, especially in those impacting seniors and people with mobility challenges. As a councillor, how would you think that you could include constituents before the changes are made? And, and for, for dessert, we can add any commentary you have on the overnight parking ban, the winter parking ban.
So, a couple of things here. This is, again, a communications issue primarily, but I, I, I think, besides the communication issue, I think, first of all, we need to make sure we prioritize separated bike lanes, separated areas for pedestrians and bikes for safety, because safety comes first. The second thing is that we have to take with these, a really iterative approach. I think we need to take, when we make changes like this, we really need to build into that process that maybe the first draft isn't gonna be the best one and be prepared to make changes in response to what happens in the real world. So, and then, as your dessert question, what do I think about the parking ban? I, I support lifting the parking ban. I've seen too many examples of where the parking ban has a disparate, disparate impact on different residents who have different levels of, different means, that is, and different configurations of their driveways and so forth. And then, once it's lifted, hopefully, if it's lifted, we can come back to the city council and say, let's create neighborhood solutions for the neighborhood problems that may result from that so that we can, can fix whatever disparate impacts there are from lifting the ban.
Julie?
So going back to the question about the, the transportation and the bike lanes and such. First of all, I do think it is communication, but it's also an education part of it. I, I find that people don't understand sometimes why the bike lanes are there, what to do, or even motorists, what to do with a, a bike lane. So I think it's both parts. I think it's, there's a piece of, maybe we're missing the education piece. If we're going to move in this direction, everyone needs to be on board with, with what it means. My husband is an avid cyclist who cycles downtown to work, commutes every day back and forth. So we talk a lot about bike lanes and what works, what doesn't work, and the safety issues around it. And getting back to when, whatever you put in, I do think it has to be iterative. And getting the input of cyclists, maybe new cyclists, people who haven't biked before. I'm not a, you know, I don't cycle that much and I would probably be nervous on it, but I'd be good to hear my perspective going down Needham Street. You know, what, what do I want to pay attention? What makes me nervous? Or someone who then, who's a, a very, you know, professional cyclist or someone, to get input from everyone. I think it's important to get the perspectives of people who walk, roll, or, you know, cycle a lot, or even the scooters, some of those issues and electric bikes. We're all gonna be navigating these, these roadways together. And I think there needs to be a piece of education and respect for everyone who is, you know, moving on the, on the roads and sidewalks.
I didn't really have anything to add on that. I was just shaking my head.
You know, as we, before we go to the summaries, I'd just like to add my own observation here on, it's not just this debate, but I've been watching the other ones and I, you know, looking at the school committee presentations and so forth. And I have to say, in the ti- in the years that I've been involved in municipal government, I think the quality of presentations and preparation of the candidates across the board, win, lose or draw, I think has really come up. I, I think people are better informed. I don't know whether they're doing their homework better or whether some of these issues have just been around so long that we've all kind of got them internalized. But, but I'm, I'm pleased, again, win, lose or draw, I think, I, I think we're in a good place as far as the candidates across the board we have this year. So I congratulate everyone who's, who's running for office. And it is an awful lot of work. I think I spent, you know, I was a consultant, so I used to tracking my hours. I think I spent well over eleven hundred hours my first year, eighty, ninety nights. And having said that, there were more, there were lots of people who worked harder than that. That was just like kind of table stakes to kind of keep up and be competent. So, thank you for that, you know, for your proposal to serve. I think we had you introduce first, Gary, so we'll start with Julie for a summation.
Okay. Oh, well, thank you. First, thanks, the, thanks to the area councils for hosting the debate. I know the, the time and effort it takes to put on these events, so thank you. Thank you for moderating, Chris, and thanks, Gary, for being here. Look, we're great, we're really, living in Newton is, you know, how do we say? It's a great city to live in. And we have so many amenities and resources and opportunities and really good neighbors. And I think sometimes we forget about that and lose sight of that. Yes, we're a city of nearly ninety thousand people and we're gonna get a lot of different opinions. And that's good. And, and it's okay to push back on some of those ideas, but I don't think, you can't push out the people who are voicing their concerns. So I think that's just one thing. And then looking ahead to the challenges around the budget, schools, housing, they're really complex. And I, I understand the city. I've been working with the city for a number of years. I am ready to do the hard work and the strategic thinking to solve the problems and move the city ahead together. Thank you. And look, you know, I'd be honored to have your vote on November, honored before November fourth.
Gary?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Chris, for moderating. Thank you to all the area council members and the area councils, especially to Chris Pitts for, I think, being possibly the driving force behind it. And thank you to everybody in the audience who took the time out to listen. So Newton, I believe, is an incredible community and I've been proud to call it my home for the last almost twenty-seven years. I think we all know that there's more to do, keeping our schools strong, making housing more affordable, protecting our environment and making city government more open and accountable. I think that's a I think that's a common theme we've heard all across this, 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 this race. As a software engineer, I think I know how to solve problems, and I know how to make systems work better for everyone. And on the Northland Liaison Committee, I've learned how to bring people together in order to get results. And I'm, I think I'm ready to hit the ground running and help build a Newton that works for everyone. And I'd be honored to earn your vote, honor before November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, thank you, Gary.
Thank you all for coming.